Please be upstanding for her worship of the mayor and the mayor will party.
Thank you, please be seated. May everybody settle down. So, welcome everybody to this evening's Borough Council meeting and welcome to members, to officers, to the public and to those watching at home. I ask all telephones to be put on silent, please. And can I remind members that they cannot use social media during the meeting, but members of the public, you are welcome to. Can I check that people have access to the following agenda documents? Firstly, the main agenda and also the supplementary agenda. Thank you. May I remind all members that all debates should be done through the mayor and without[566.92][566.92]interruptions. I am keen to make sure the council meetings proceed fairly and with opportunities for everybody to speak without disturbance. As part of my mayor responsibilities, I visited a Quaker meeting house a few weeks ago. And whilst I was chatting to the gentleman there, I was talking to him about some of their beliefs. And he raised something really interesting with me and I thought it would be a really nice thing to bring to the council meeting. He said that before they ever speak, they think about firstly, is what I'm about to say kind? Is it necessary? And is it true? And if it isn't at least two of those things, then don't say it. So, a little bit of a test for everybody this evening. If we could try and, if we could try and go along the lines of that, because I think it's quite a nice thing to do. Okay. So, members on that point, I will also remember that we, remind you that we are formally committed to civility in public life. And I'd like us to set a good example to others. So whilst it's fine for us to disagree politically, we must always do so in a respectful matter, manner, sorry. This is particularly essential, given that there are council elections coming and political debate will be carrying on at a heightened pace in the coming months, both in this chamber and beyond. So it's up to each of us to help set the correct tone. And I know I can rely on members when contributing today. May I also remind you that points of order can only be made about breaches of the constitution or law. And also, may I also ask members if they wish to make a point of order to quote the relevant sections of the council procedure rules from the constitution when they seek to do so. So, thank you. We will now move on to the first item on the agenda. So I have apologies of absence and declarations of interest from members. So firstly, I have apologies from absence from councillor Giles, councillor Malik, councillor Radjat, councillor Jagdis Sharma, councillor Emma Sidhu, councillor Raggu Windusidhu, councillor Salmon Shaheen, councillor Tony Lukey. Okay. Does anybody else have any apologies for absence? Thank you. May I draw members' attention to the document in the agenda on declaring interests? And so may I also ask if there are any declarations of interest from members about anything on the agenda tonight? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I raise a point of order on that, section 5A of the constitution?
Yes.
And I don't want to refer directly to any ongoing investigations. I did give advance notice of this point of order just before, but could the monitoring officer just advise what the consequences are for undeclared interests, particularly if subsequent disclosures are found to have influenced how a councillor votes? And could they also advise on the consequences of historic failures to declare interests over a period of several years?
Yes, I believe that you've already spoken to the deputy monitoring officer, but I'm happy to ask the monitoring officer to answer that again for you now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's actually quite a broad question, because as all members will know, there are a number of different types of interests, all of which are enumerated in the Members' Code of Conduct. So we have registrable interests, non-registered interests, disclosable pecuniary interests. The most significant of those interests are disclosable pecuniary interests, because should a member take part in a decision, the debate and voting on a decision, and fail to declare a disclosable pecuniary interest, that is potentially a criminal offence. This is, I mean, but the broad point is that all members have a duty, obviously, to declare their interests, update their register of interests as and when required. I can't really answer anything more specifically than that, just because of the breadth of the question, but the Code of Conduct is key.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Mashishu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a declaration that I have featured on a betting commercial as an extra. So in case anyone gets to watch, it features Gavin Hastings and a few other Scottish rugby players. I just wanted to declare that.
Thank you very much, Councillor Mashishu, and good plug as well. Thank you. Councillor Mashishu, I've just been advised by the monitoring officer that I ought to request on whether it's a disclosable pecuniary interest and therefore whether you are planning to take part in the vote on the motion. And is it a disclosable pecuniary interest?
Well, it might be potentially, because it was encouraging to bet.
Well, I think probably the question would be, are you likely to be employed by them again under similar purposes?
I wasn't a very good performer. It's a one-off.
Okay. Good job that that's at the end of proceedings. I think the monitoring officer is going to decide in the interim whether it's a DPI or not. But thank you very much for raising it. Oh, if there are no further, we'll now move to the announcements. So unfortunately, we start this evening on a very sad note with the news of the death of our colleague and friend councillor Richard Foot, who passed away after a spell in hospital on Thursday last week, the 20th of November, 2025. Councillor Foot served on the council for two occasions, as a Labour councillor for the Hanworth Ward from 1968 until 1974, and then again for Hanworth Ward from 2014 until 2022, and then following ward boundary reorganisation for the new Hanworth Village Ward in 2022, the ward for which he was a member at the time of his death. Councillor Richard Winston Foot was born in Hanworth in 1943 and defined himself as a democratic socialist from the age of 16. He joined the Transport and General Workers Union at the age of 18 and supported union members at both Heathrow and Gatwick Airport. After joining the Labour Party, he became Secretary of the Felton Branch. He was later the election agent for the successful campaign, election campaigns of Russell Kerr MP and Tony Banks as a member of the Greater London Council. He was elected to the newly formed London Borough of Hounslow at its second election in 1968 and served two terms, which were for three years at that time, until 1974, when he retired from public office to concentrate on his career at British Airways, where he was a cargo operations manager and later road services manager worldwide. During his first period of office as a councillor, he was elected Chair of the Housing Committee, resolving a significant problem relating to the development of the Ivy Bridge estate and setting up housing advisory committees, which were rare at the time. He was proud to have overseen the building of a record number of council houses during his time as Chair of the Housing Committee. Upon his return to the council in 2014 and having had a long interest in policing matters, he was immediately appointed as Cabinet Member for Community Protection, in which role he served until 2017. He was later the Chair of the Hanworth Area Forum, Chair of the Licensing and General Purposes Committee, Vice Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee and a member of the Planning Development Committee and Health and Safety Committee. His hobbies included playing and watching cricket and football, reading, travelling, and he was an enthusiastic member of the Hampton and District Arts League. Councillor Foot's lifelong commitment to public service, social justice and the people of Hanworth leads a lasting legacy. He will be greatly missed by his colleagues, friends and the community he served with such dedication for over two decades across two distinguished periods in office. Councillor Foot has been suffering from declining health in recent years and had spent some time in hospital in recent weeks. Nonetheless, the news of his passing was still a surprise and a shock and saddening to everyone who knew or worked with him. I know that from the outpouring of tributes and appreciation that followed the news of his death, that I speak for the council as a whole when I say that he was a much-liked and respected member across the chamber and we will miss him. I would now like to invite councillor Tom Bruce to say a few words in tribute about the late councillor Foot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was reflecting on your Quaker test, or the Quaker test for speaking, thinking about what I was about to say. It's certainly true, what I'm about to say, it is kind and unfortunately, it is necessary. I wish it wasn't, but, but it is. So it is with great sadness that we mark the passing of our colleague, councillor Richard Foot, not only a dedicated Labour councillor for Hanworth Village, but he was also a personal friend to many of us in this chamber, myself included. Richard's commitment to Labour values was lifelong. From joining the Transport and General Workers Union as a young man, to supporting workers at Heathrow and Gatwick, he carried those values into everything he did. When he joined, rejoined the council in 2014, I remember talking to him a number of times. And it's interesting, I had at that point been on the council four years, he had been on it, I think, for six years, but 30 or 40 years previously. So that sort of finding out about the history and talking about his own Labour values and how he was, how he was brought up, but also me supporting him with finding out how the council works in a new way was interesting, that sort of, I think he even put it, young and old, and, or new and old, I think, is what he said. As you've said already, he first served Hanworth in 1968 and then returned again in 2014 after a long career with British Airways. I had the privilege of serving alongside Richard in his council, including during his time on Cabinet, and saw firsthand his unfailing dedication to the people of Hanworth, to the borough and to his colleagues. I know we all offer our deepest sympathies to his family, his friends and all who knew him. Richard's warmth, his conviction, his service and of course, his wit will be greatly missed. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Can I ask, can I invite councillor John Bidoff to speak, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's always very sad to hear of the death of a councillor, especially one who is still serving. And I would like on behalf of the Conservative group to pay tribute to councillor Richard Foot's service to the borough and to send our thoughts and sympathies to his family. Family was always hugely important to Richard. I remember him telling us in those few minutes before remote meetings start, when councillors chat informally with each other, that he had spent that day with a grandchild. He smiled warmly while describing the lightness of that part of his life, compared with the rather more prosaic hours we spend digging through documents and the darker time spent dealing with often very challenging problems faced by our residents. Richard did not shy away from challenge, he hit it head-on with determination. I've spoken before about the way, about the way being a member of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee and its panels brings together people of different views for a common purpose, leaving politics aside and working cross-party with the same aim in mind. Richard and I served together on the scrutiny committee and its housing and environment panel and were often aligned, which he sometimes found surprising, particularly when, starting in 2019, we both spoke out loudly about the many failings of housing associations and the need for the council to intervene. I supported his suggestion that this should be the focus of the scrutiny housing and environment panel, when that ended up going nowhere because the continued failing of several housing associations to understand we meant business and wanted action. He and I supported each other in bringing it back onto the agenda, this time with us jointly also suggesting that we tackle it by including a scrutiny in a day session, the first time this scrutiny method was used here. The problems have still not been solved, but his determination to fight for better has led to some changes in the council's oversight of housing associations, which I will continue to try to influence inevitably with Richard in mind. I thank him for that. Richard was very clearly focused on residents, defending them, arguing for them, wanting the best outcome from them from council policies, often reminding us that Hanworth Village, the ward he represented with such vigour, was the most deprived in the borough and had the least funding from the council for improvements. He approached his work as a councillor and on scrutiny with the housing and environmental panel with genuine heartfelt passion for justice. He was focused on residents, not ideology, and residents, including housing association residents, the overview and scrutiny committee, its housing and environment panel and the council's work benefited from that. He was, I think it's fair to say, a one-off.
Many thanks for that, councillor Bidoff. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Thank you, councillor Chadry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's with the profound sadness that I raise today to pay tribute to councillor Richard Foot, a colleague, a mentor and a true friend. For me, this loss is deeply personal. I knew Richard for more than a decade. When I was first selected as a candidate for Hanworth, from that very first moment, he welcomed me, guided me and stood by me with kindness and generosity. Working alongside him as a fellow councillor for eight years was one of the greatest privilege of my public life. Richard was not only experienced and knowledgeable, he was patient, encouraging and always willing to share what he had learned through decades of service. He never hesitated to support me, to reassure me or to offer advice and gain invaluable experience from him. Richard was Hanworth through and Hanworth. He was born in Hanworth, raised there and committed to his community throughout all of his life. His dedication to Hanworth Village was not just political, it was personal, heartfelt and lifelong. He cared for his community as if every resident were a member of his family. His public service began in 1968, when he was first elected to represent Hanworth Ward. From the very start, he proved to be a councillor who always puts resident first. Richard was remarkably kind-hearted person, he was gentle in manners but firm in principle. He believed deeply in social justice in community and in treating people with dignity. His sense of humour and his ability to put people at ease made him not only a respected councillor but beloved one. To me, he was not just a colleague, he was a true friend. We shared many conversations, many debates and many moments of joys in serving the community we both loved. I will always be grateful for the support he gave me, for the lessons he taught me and for the friendship he offered. Madam Mayor, today Hanworth Village has lost one of its most dedicated champion. The borough has lost a hard-working principal councillor and many of us here have lost a dear friend, but Richard leaves behind a legacy, a legacy of service, integrity and love for his community that will continue to shape Hanworth Village for many years to come. When I visited him just a few days before he passed away, he just only was keep reminding myself and councillor Cameron, who was with me, to say, Sam, please give my apologies for the council meetings. So to Richard, thank you for your friendship, your guidance and your bearing commitment to the people of Hanworth and you will be deeply missed, but you will never be forgotten. May you rest in peace, withdraws. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chadry. And I think I now speak on behalf of all members. I'd like to extend our thoughts and condolences to our friend Richard Foot's family and friends. We will now stand for one minute in silent tribute. Just very quickly, the monitoring officer is ready to answer the question around pecuniary interests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the interest declared by councillor Mashishu a moment ago, it sounds as though the interest was a registrable, disclosable pecuniary interest, but it also sounded as though the work carried on has ceased and is not ongoing. And so for that reason, although the interest was registrable, it's no longer in effect. And so I do consider that the member was able to take part in the discussion and debate on the motion.
Thank you very much. And now, as I'm sure Richard would appreciate, we're going to move on to some slightly more happy news. I have an announcement relating to two elements of our programme of commemoration for our 60th anniversary as a local authority, following the council's creation on 1st of April 1965. I'm delighted to report that I have been, oh, sorry. Whoops. I've missed out the Cabinet members again, which I think I might have done last time. So keen, sorry. So I'm just going to finish what I was saying and then I will move on to Cabinet members' apologies, Cabinet. So I'm delighted to report that I've been visiting libraries across the borough and meeting groups of children from local schools to talk to them about the council. So I'm delighted to report that I've been visiting libraries across the borough and meeting groups of children from local schools to talk to them about the council and the merrility. They were all very enthusiastic and it is very invigorating and great fun for me to answer all their questions. These visits will continue into the new year and it will brighten many a dark winter's day, I suspect. Now, I'll let members guess who wrote that line for me. I'm going to apologize to cabinet and hand back over. Can I ask if any cabinet, thank you, thank you councillor Bruce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sadly, I need to go back to some further sad news that I want to make sure everyone is aware of. As I'm sure most people in this room know now, Denise Smith, who was the Labour Group political assistant for a number of years here, has also sadly passed away and we pay tribute to her, her life and her work, especially what she did in Hounslow and for Hounslow and us on this side in the Labour Group, but all of the things that she carried out in her life, um, working for MPs, being a councillor, lots of activity in the Labour Group. Um, she was never still, really. I have, you know, very fond memories of time spent with her, but particularly at LGA Conference where she would just introduce you to a person after person after person because she seemed to know everybody that was there. She retired from here a number of years ago and moved up north and was looking forward to a new chapter in her life, but I believe the political comeback for her was on the cards and sadly was not able to be fulfilled. So I'd just like to say thank you to Denise and for all, on behalf of the Labour Group and the council to pass our best wishes on to her family and friends. Also disappointing news, um, I'm sure many members here will have heard about the fire happening in Southall uh, earlier this morning. The latest information I have is that, to be clear, it's in Ealing and Ealing are coordinating the response. But the latest information I have is there are no casualties, the fire continues but is under control. The number of fire engines there has been stepping down continuously throughout the day. And I would like to pay tribute to especially the firefighters and the staff and the team at Heston and Isaworth Fire Station who have been involved in that, but of course, the whole London Fire Brigade, which I believe there are about hundred and fifty officers there at points today, um, and doing a fantastic job on behalf of our residents as well as neighbouring authority as well. And lastly, I will go back to some happy news. I do have some happy news. A couple of weeks ago, Hounslow High Street was our first newest, the newest in the country, newest in London Business Improvement District. Bid was won by ballot, uh, the majority, a vast majority, over ninety percent of those who took part in the ballot, that's businesses in Hounslow High Street, voted in favour of becoming a business improvement district. This is additional money from those businesses into a central pot run by themselves, directors appointed by the businesses themselves, uh, for the benefit of those businesses in the high street. So this is something that will work very much alongside the council and I want to pay particularly tribute to the West London Chamber of Commerce, formerly Hounslow Chamber of Commerce, who were instrumental in getting this started, set up, working with the businesses and getting it over the line and they'll be instrumental in its continuing success. It will start small and manageable, but I expect over the next few years for it to grow and be an enormous part of what makes Hounslow High Street fantastic. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Councillor Garywell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got two announcements, Madam Mayor. I want to make you aware that our new online flight tipping reporting form will be going live today. As part of the Transforming Community Experience Programme, a resident will be able to report flight tipping incidents directly by our website, making it easier for the council to take prompt action and keep our borough cleaner. The second one, Madam Mayor, is I want to congratulate our animal welfare team who have yet again received a number of RSPCA annual four print awards. Thanks to their incredible work, we are proud to be the only local authority in England to achieve platinum accreditation for our caniling standards. Animal Welfare Officer Georgia O'Brien was highly commended in a special recognition award category. This year, the team has faced a mega increase in the number of animals coming through our canals, but the team has remained committed to delivering our first-class animal welfare services. A huge thank you and congratulations to entire team. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Garywell. Councillor Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to take this opportunity to record my heartfelt thanks to the staff who worked tirelessly to get us the second highest award under the Regulator of Social Housing Consumer Standards Assessment. We know we we, we know we are not quite there, but we are fully aware of the gaps and now working through an improvement plan to address the issues noted in the regulator's report. Having picked up this portfolio in twenty twenty-two, I know firsthand the issues we inherited. But with the passion and dedication of our director of housing, Modestia Nucha, and her team, we have made a lot of progress and continue to move in the right direction. I want to use this opportunity to thank Modesta and all the staff that made this C two award possible, namely, Oksana Stratton, Ben Tomlinson, Jonathan Joseph, Paul Perkins, Rory Prendergast, Nicola Justina, Mike Ty, Lena Warden, Ben Knowles and Sunita Sandhu, who all contributed to the requests of the regulator. As a council, we are committed to ensuring that we maintain the highest level of regulatory consumer standards, ensuring our residents are safe and involved in the decision-making process which affects the management of their homes. As the cabinet member for housing, I'm very proud of the journey we are on and the strong position we now are in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Sampson. Councillor Garywell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for the White Ribbon Day today for supporting. Thank you. This year, the theme for White Ribbon Day is We Speak Up. And as one of six London boroughs to be white ribbon town, I want to encourage all of us to use our voices to speak up when we see something that doesn't feel right and help to eradicate all forms of abuse and violence against women and girls. I asked colleagues to join me in supporting this year's sixteen days of activism against gender-based violence. During these sixteen days, we will be raising awareness of different forms of abuse women and girls face and how the council and its partners can help. Videos of adult and child survivors of domestic abuse detailing their journeys will be shared along with bite-sized information on how to spot abusive behaviours. We are delivering events at Hounslow Schools, West Middlesex Hospital and ending with a celebration to welcome volunteer health DA champions at Feltham Health Centre. Our commitment to Hounslow survivors is firmly embedded in our corporate plan, the safer community strategy and our dedicated violence against women and girls plan, built around three points, ensuring victims, survivors and children receive the right to help, working together to prevent violence and taking action against perpetrators. We must stand together to send the message to our communities that harassment, abuse and violence against women and girls is unacceptable and must never be tolerated. The council is working hard to support and safeguard our victims and survivors, but there is much more to do yet, Madam Mayor. But we promise we will continue to prioritise this work because every woman and girl in Hounslow deserves to feel safe and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Garywell. Um, can I, I believe councillor Sampson has one further.
Yeah, sorry about that, Madam Mayor. On October the twenty-seventh, Arabs Law introduced strict time scales for social housing landlords to tackle damp and mould. Here in Hounslow, we were already ahead of the curve. Since twenty twenty-three, we have taken proactive measures to protect residents against damp and mould by setting up a dedicated Healthy Homes team jointly with colleagues at Koala. Over the past two years, this team has removed hazards, supported residents in managing condensation and provided clear information through leaflets, QR codes and online resources. In preparation for these new requirements, our housing team reviewed and strengthened the business model to meet future demand and improve customer satisfaction. The result speaks for themselves. Since performance has improved dramatically, we work in progress, with work in progress, orders reduced by around forty percent in just the past month, despite the recent increase in demand during the winter months. We have also introduced a new no-access procedure, working closely with housing management and tenancy sustainment teams to ensure our most vulnerable residents receive the support they need. This is tangible process, uh, progress, sorry. It shows that Hounslow is not waiting for legislation to act. We took responsibility for delivering safer homes for our residents in the borough. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Councillor Chowdhury.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two announcements. I'm delighted to share that we have extended the holiday activities and food programme for another three years. The half programme plays a wide role in supporting children and young people during school holidays by providing enriching activities and nutrition meals, helping to boost health, wellbeing and learning readiness. It also offers essential support to parents and carers during these periods. This past summer alone, over two thousand eight hundred children took part in half activities, with twenty-five percent of participants having additional needs. I had the privilege of seeing firsthand how impactful these high-quality, inclusive and engaging activities are in improving outcome for children and young people. Fully aligned with our corporate plan priority to create a thriving Hounslow that is best placed to grow up. Thanks to the government for six hundred million national funding commitment for the half programme over the next three financial years. We can now plan more strategically, strengthen partnership with our excellent local providers, staff and community groups and deliver even greater support for families across Hounslow. My second announcement is on the government confirming its commitment to supporting families and giving children the best start to life by allocating Hounslow one point seven million per year for family hubs for the next three years. The best hour of life also set an ambitious target for seventy-five percent of children in England to achieve the expected good level of development. Goals by the time they reach statutory education. In Hounslow, we will be working hard to increase the portion of children achieving this standard from the current sixty-nine percent to seventy-six percent over the next three years. The funding allocated to us will allow us to continue and extend our offer to children, young people and families, increasing access to reach more families that need support. This support from central government builds on our existing investment and is in line with corporate plan priority of giving underfives access to high-quality early-year education. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chowdhury. Councillor Bath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of good announcements to make. Uh, the first one is, um, I'm really happy to announce that all eleven of our regular domiciliary care providers were rated good or better after the last inspection by the Care Quality Commission. Now, as you probably, so yeah, random, of course. So, um, as you are all aware, domiciliary care is one of the most important vital services that the council will deliver to residents who need support and help in their home with their care needs. And around eleven million pounds is spent and dedicated to supporting residents in their homes. The CQC achievement reflects the hard work and commitment of our providers, continuous improvement in practice and the outstanding support from our brokerage teams who regularly guide and audit, rather, and guide providers to raise standards. Importantly, and it's also one that we should note again and remind ourselves, is that we do pay our providers the London Living Wage, which ensures that care workers actually receive a fair salary for the essential work that they do. We should also be very proud of this result and the brilliant work that our officers have done to actually support the domiciliary care providers and to ensure that our residents are kept healthy and independent in their homes. My second announcement is a little overdue, but I do want to give this team a shout. It's the Hounslow Health Outreach Teams, also known as the HOT Teams. And I am delighted to share that in June, uh, the HOT Teams were highly commended at the prestigious MJ wards in their innovation in reducing health inequalities category for their outstanding work in the heart of the local communities. I don't know if you've seen them around in the borough, but the Health Outreach Team Manager says that the team are out in rain or shine, reaching, rain or shine, reaching people who might otherwise be overlooked and helping them connect with free, high-quality health services. I'm really proud of their work. Um, they are truly making a difference and I know they'll continue to do so for years to come. The team's approach obviously aligns with our commitments to making sure that we try and create a a healthy Hounslow for all our communities. So if you do see them around, give them, give them a shout. You could even have your blood pressure checked if you want to.
Thank you, councillor Bath. Councillor Garywell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Madam Mayor, I have a few announcements to make reference to my portfolio. And these, all these announcements are good news. The first one is reference to the payment pledge. Two million payment pledge is delivering new payments across all twenty-two wards, improving safety, accessibility and appearance of the neighbourhood. Highways have already completed ten roads and ten wards, with the remaining in November, January, February, March. The last ward scheme in Hounslow East will formally close the pledge. If we have further funding for DFT in twenty twenty-six, we will continue the pledge as some of the councillors from across did ask me this question, so I'm making it clear. Okay. Now we come to the weeding programme. The weeding programme started with two sprays, application phase one completed in August and the second started in September. Over four hundred kilometres of roads have been spared, has been covered. And I would like to even inform the, everybody here and the members that we are the only borough in the country to undergo a weed control trial which took place from May to August. Six options were shortlisted from twenty offers put through from companies across Europe and North America. A comprehensive trial report has now been completed and shared with three partners. The first solution which is, is the heat lance, successfully tried, trialed and now adopted for weed clearance along watercourses to the point where the equipment is being purchased by Ringway. Two solutions approved have also been approved to proceed for more extensive trials in twenty twenty-six. Each of the two solutions will be given award each of thirty roads and two treatment cycles to further score the efficiency of the treatment in different climates from April to September. One of the solution is a bio-friendly additive, second is a weakened chemical with a limited glyphosate additive. The remaining twenty wards will be treated with chemical solutions as per three-year recovery plan. Eleven more, eleven memorials have been visited and cleaned and maintained by highways during this year. Now we come to the leafing programme. Leafing programme is on track. We are continuing the planned leafing programme of three hundred priority roads, which commence in November and additional crews. Hounslow Highways, even I'm delighted to let everybody know here, the Hounslow Highways won the Green Business Award last Friday, uh, which was house. Now we come to the street lights. That was a concern from my friends across there. And I would like to inform them, a consultation was done with Met Police, Fire Brigade and the community safety teams. We will not be dimming the lights because we will not be compromising the safety of the residents. The compliment goes to us. Okay, now we come to recycling. We have invested in a modern and sustainable fleet for recycling. Okay, now we come to recycling. We have invested in a modern and sustainable, sustainable fleet for recycling to meet, meet future. Thank you for future demands. And last is, as promised, eleven Christmas trees are being installed at eleven different locations. First switch on was Saturday twenty second November at Hounslow High Street, followed by Chiswick on the twenty seventh November and Brentford sixth December and so on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Gary Well. Um, I'd like to apologize for Cabinet for, uh, jumping the gun and also to apologize to Denise, who's a, who's a good friend and colleague. I can see the look on her face. If she'd have seen me do that, it would be very similar to the one that she stared at me when I first joined the council and voted against the whip. Uh, I can see she would have given me the same face this evening. Um, thank you, yes. Um, and our final significant date for your diary then is, uh, the sixtieth anniversary unveiling pen portraits. Unveiling event and festive Mayoral reception. So you will all have received a calendar invite to view the wonderful portrait, um, and it will take place on Tuesday, the ninth of December and start at six thirty. I look forward to seeing you all there and hope it will be a delightful evening. Uh, and to finish, I'm sure members will want to join me in congratulating councillor Jack Emsley on his recent marriage. We will wish him well and his new wife great happiness for the future. So we will now move on to the first substantive item. So agenda item, uh, three. So we now come to the minutes of the meeting held on the sixteenth of September twenty twenty five. May I draw members' attention to the proposed amendment to the minutes which is detailed on, in the table supplementary agenda in front of members? May I ask members if they have any other corrections that they may wish to make? Council McGregor.
Many thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, on page fifteen. We have under the minutes that I refer to item six of the previous minutes and asking that the question should be matched, should be answered. My request was noted, still no answer. Can I find of the matter in hand? Not good enough. And when we look at page eighteen, we have an issue here. Let's have a look at that. That's right. Yep, here we go. I made a point that if the risk and financial awards, okay, and I made a point, uh, asking what the report was meant to cover because it didn't cover first principles, no response to that either.
Sorry, what page was that second one on?
Eighteen and it's the first large paragraph down is the last, last few lines. The risk and financial report was lacking substance and I made the comment, I asked for a response and I didn't get one.
Both of those are noted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Macouncillor.
Page twenty five. There's a typo. Last paragraph. The question internal versus external was very important. The council McGregor believe that the council had to reduce costs and and the word get, get back into balance. The get is missing. And on page thirty one, we have, I think it's councillor Mosley who, uh, was doing something there. Let's have a look at that. Page thirty one. Oh, yes. Uh, in the first large paragraph, we have a list of figures and so forth. But we don't have figures that were more current, which were available. And we know that the numbers quoted by councillor Mosley have changed dramatically. They've all gone the wrong way. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for that, Council McGregor. All of those are noted. Does anybody else have any corrections they seek to make? In that case, uh, are there any matters arising from the minutes? Uh, Mayor, I remind you, this is just for clarification, not to reopen the debate.
How many members actually read the minutes?
I couldn't possibly tell you that. Uh, I could ask for a show of hands, but I'm not sure they would meet with the, with the Quakers direction I gave earlier. Thank you. But thank you for your vigilance, Council McGregor. So may I now ask members to agree the minutes, including the change in the supplementary agenda pack? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item four, um, do any members have petitions, new petitions that they wish to present? Council Strad Turp.
I have a petition on behalf of the residents of Talbot Road in Isleworth. It's a request that the council consider instigating a low traffic neighbourhood in Talbot Road between Tal- uh, St Margaret's Road and, um, Twickenham Road. Talbot Road is a narrow residential road and is regularly used as a cut through during peak hours resulting in pollution, road rage and damage to residents' cars. So if the council consider the installation of a camera enforced LTM.
Thank you, Council Strad Turp. If you could bring that up, please. I believe I've got some other petitions as well, Council Alau.
Madam Mayor, I, I'm presenting a petition. I'm presenting a petition on behalf of Lambda Park users requesting improved lighting, consideration of CCTV and outdoor gym equipment. Residents, especially those walking early in the morning and during evenings in the winter months, feel that the park is unsafe due to poor lighting. Uh, these improvements would help make the park safer, more accessible and better used by the residents. And I ask that the council reviews these concerns and provides a formal response.
Thank you, Council Alau. Council Chowdhury.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's a bit close. Somebody's, um, John, don't turn yours off. I think that's on, there we go. Okay, there we go. That's better. So following the tragic fatal incident on Thornby Road in May, a new road safety petition was launched on the eighth of October. We've got, um, two residents here, Bunkage Mulhe and, um, Ian Burdes. So Bunkage, it was his aunt who sadly passed away and they've been quite active gathering signatures. They've already got four hundred, over four hundred signatures. So there's clearly quite a huge, um, amount of public support there and no doubt they will continue to get, um, people supporting this petition. Um, so as part of this petition, I welcome a full review of the area as specified in the petition and look forward to working with residents to address the safety concerns, introducing traffic calming measures um, and interventions that can support this. And thank you to Bunkage and Ian for raising this really, um, important issue.
Thank you very much, Council Chowdhury. Are there any further petitions? Thank you. So we now move to the second part of the process. So we have no petitions for consideration at the council meeting itself this evening. Now may I ask members to note the petitions listed in the report? That there aren't any. Agenda item five. So firstly, uh, this is a reference from the meeting of Cabinet on the eleventh of November twenty twenty five. Hounslow's Vision twenty twenty, uh, twenty fifty. We now come to agenda item five, which is a reference from the last meeting of the Cabinet held on the eleventh of November twenty twenty five, asking members to discuss and ratify the approval of the Hounslow Vision twenty fifty document. And I would also like to remind members that under our recently agreed revised council procedure rules, proposals of reports may speak for five minutes, but all other contributions may only be up to three minutes. So firstly, can I invite councillor Tom Bruce to propose and introduce the report in the absence of councillor Adwat?
Thank you very much. Um, this evening, I'm pleased to introduce Hounslow's Vision twenty fifty. In a world where the here and now often dominates, Vision twenty fifty is a bold piece of work setting out long term strategic direction for the borough. It's neither a traditional strategy nor a statutory requirement, but it is community leadership and place shaping at its most fundamental. It's a commitment to long term thinking and to leading with foresight, imagination and purpose. In a world shaped by those short term pressures, be it quarterly reports, inspection regimes, budget cycles and political timelines as well. We do need to think about how we can look more long term as well. The most fundamental challenge perhaps we face climate change, democratic shifts and inequality cry out for that long term vision. And this Vision twenty fifty is our response to that. It's a way of thinking about the future of Hounslow, not in terms of its services, but in terms of legacy, stewardship and place leadership. It's about being good ancestors. Delighted to say many members engaged with the development of twenty, Vision twenty fifty in the summer. What I believe is one of the largest engagements we've ever undertaken as a council. We've spoken with and heard from more than two thousand residents, businesses, councillors and colleagues. And I'm really grateful to members right across the council for drawing residents' attention to the opportunity. Not to consult on draft strategy in a traditional sense, but instead to code, instead to co-design Vision twenty fifty and to collectively imagine the future. It's really, um, exciting to look inside the document at much of what's there. But what struck me is the postcards. I don't know if people have seen those and they, they've stood out where people have written to themselves from the past and imagined what life is like there. And it's really interesting. I said this at Cabinet. But actually, some of the things that has been written, really things that I would have considered necessarily. But young people particularly thinking about what AI, what technology will mean for them and to them in the future. And it's really powerful to see that and to understand how all of us in different ways think about our future and what the future might bring. I'm also really delighted, um, with councillor McGregor, I have to say, um, who used the Hounslow Herald to encourage engagement with this issue, applauding a focus on the long term and responsible stewardship as well as arguing that we all must engage with these serious challenges. So thank you particularly to councillor McGregor. Across eighty discreet events, we've asked people not just what they think Hounslow will be like, but as I said, with reference to the postcards, what they hope it could be and what they hope their life will be in the future. This insight combined with robust data, including some of what members saw recently in the state of the borough and scenario planning has shaped a vision that is grounded in lived experience and collective imagination. Twenty fifty, Vision twenty fifty is structured not around council services, but rather about individual life courses. It considers care, education, work, living arrangements and older adulthood, all things that we need to be considering to varying degrees throughout our life. And it is about that lived experience of people, not just how the services we deliver, but what we do as a response to the challenges and opportunities, uh, that people face. It's not just about now. As I said, it's about twenty five years, uh, in the future. Vision twenty fifty doesn't exist in splendid isolation. As a local authority, we do always think beyond the here and now. As an example, in my portfolio, the local plan is thinking about our housing and our employment beyond the next two or three years. It looks at that up until twenty forty one. And in fact, we're going to, um, public examination early next year. There'll be a public examination on the local plan. And the team have already said to me, once that finishes and hopefully is adopted in the middle of next year, they have already started the work on the next local plan. So the work now starts for that twenty fifty vision in terms of housing and employment and land use in our local plan. So Cabinet has agreed Vision twenty fifty is the council's long term vision and it's now Borough Council for discussion and ratification. From here, it will inform our corporate planning, our business strategy and future engagements. Whatever the outcome of May twenty twenty six and the elections, I hope that what has been put in this report by our residents and our businesses and councillors here will be taken on by any future administration because it is meaningful and it matters to people here. So rather than stumble upon twenty fifty, twenty fifty, Vision twenty fifty is instead an invitation, an invitation to think long term, to imagine boldly and to lead with purpose. I really look forward to people's comments and reflections on this and I therefore move the report.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Can I invite somebody to second? Yes, councillor Gary Well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second the report and, uh, I would like to say a few words as well on this. Thank you, Tom, for bringing this report. Vision twenty fifty is about living arrangements, what the future holds for housing and environment in which people live, work and play. Our engagement emphasised the importance people placed on a clean environment. Residents want a cleaner Hounslow in twenty fifty with changing individual behaviours and infrastructure to support people's needs. Quick fixes may solve today's problems, but only long term thinking will ensure that the system remains reliable, sustainable and adaptable for future generations. This administration is committed to making London Borough of Hounslow a cleaner, more livable place where people feel proud of their communities. That means tackling the issues that matter most, like fly tipping, waste and recycling. Through smarter management and better services, we aim to create neighbourhoods that reflect the care and the pride of the people who live in them. This is not about cleaner streets. It's about shaping a Hounslow that remains a place residents are proud to call home for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Gary Well. Before we get to the debate part of the item, as this, uh, as this is a, a report that's come from another committee, we split the questions and the debate into two separate sections. So we require questions to be asked first and then the usual debate to follow afterwards. So this means that we first have a question stage where members may ask one question of councillor Bruce on the report. And then after that, we will move to the more normal debate stage. So therefore, do any members have a question that they wish to put to councillor Bruce? Oh goodness. Okay. Okay. Have I missed one? Okay. All right. Thank you. As we've got a number, I'm going to take the questions first and then hand over to councillor Bruce. So I'm going to start with, uh, councillor Assim.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you for bringing this report, um, to Borough Council meeting. I'm really excited that we're finally having conversations and asking questions about what our borough will look like in twenty five years' time, particularly at a time when it.
Sorry, councillor Assim, I'm gonna have to, I need a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting to that.
You're welcome to, to join in the debate, but I need a question first.
With that in mind, uh, what will Vision twenty fifty mean for Feltham?
I think councillor Bruce, I'm going to take the questions unless you'd rather. Maybe I'll take three at a time and then, okay, thank you. Uh, then I'm going to go to councillor Sharma.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, back in September, Hounslow hosted the Opportunity Hounslow Conference in Brentford's University of West London Building. How do events like the Opportunity Hounslow support the council's Vision twenty fifty, please?
Thank you, councillor Sharma. Then I'm going to go to councillor McGregor.
Madam Mayor, the report states that there is no financial implication, but it's a sixty two page report. How much did it cost to prepare and how much man hours and how much effort was put in? And how many references were made to outside boroughs as benchmarks?
Councillor McGregor, you're only allowed one question. So could I ask you to choose which one? Thank you. Councillor Bruce. So the first question on Feltham.
Well, I'll go backwards. Um, about ten thousand pounds, uh, in total. Um, I believe that's, uh, the figure I've been given in terms of all the. No, sorry. Ten, I said. That, that was the figure I, I was given. Um, I can clarify that for you and, uh, find out that exactly right later. Opportunity Hounslow, councillor Sharma. Um, yeah, you, you were there. It was a fantastic, um, event. Opportunity Hounslow, the second iteration of it, point is bringing in investment to Hounslow, looking at how businesses and developers, public sets of bodies can all work together. Um, and this looks at how Vision twenty fifty looks at how all of those are going to play a vital role in shaping our future. So it isn't just about council and council services. It is about what we want the borough to be and we want the borough to be where all of these play a part in, in shaping our future. So how the NHS works alongside the University of West London, how that works alongside, um, developers, looking at the Golden Mile, how the Golden Mile links with our work in Feltham and all of those kind of things together. Very, very important. And coming on to Feltham, uh, councillor Assim, um, we've got, uh, that's coming to, uh, Cabinet very soon, our future Feltham Plan. Looking at the Feltham Master Plan refresh, we had a master plan in twenty seventeen. Huge amount of work has happened in Feltham. But that work, uh, needs to continue and it needs to be updated, uh, current for the current, uh, climate. That's the work that we take for now, but it. That's the work that we take for now, but it looks forward to the future. It's how our assets can be used most effectively, it's what the high street is going to look like in the future. It's how land that is in public ownership at the moment, like the Ministry of Defence site, is going to be for the benefit of the residents, not simply sold off to the highest bidder, but how our public, public, public partnership can work together to deliver fantastic outcomes for residents where you live in Feltham.
Thank you councillor Bruce. I'm going to take the next round of questions. Councillor Bowring.
Thank you madam mayor. My question is around climate change, which is of course one of the biggest challenges we're going to face. Sort of long-term planning means preparing effects of climate change, which is wildfires, droughts, biodiversity breakdown, buildings overheating, flooding. It also means generating cheap green energy rather than having to rely on volatile fossil fuel markets. So the question is, with the Tories pledging to tear up their climate change commitments, how will this strategy encourage us to take seriously the threat of climate change?
Thank you councillor Bowring. Councillor Amir, please.
Thank you madam mayor. Thank you councillor Bruce for bringing this important report to Borough Council, given that over 2,000 residents contributed to this strategy, including many children and people of all ages. What do you think residents were, why do you think residents were so keen to engage with this piece of work? Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Akram, please.
Thank you madam mayor. Thank you for bringing this report. One of the biggest trend we will see over the next 25 years in the ages population. Or does Vision 2015 help us to prepare for the applications this might have for the service we provided? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Akram. Councillor Bruce.
Sorry councillor Akram, was that about older person's services? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, fine. Yeah, so starting on that, I think the State of the Borough report outlined very clearly that life expectancy is increasing, but average life health and healthy life expectancy is not keeping pace. So what we know we need to do is address that. Making sure that we have connected working from our adult services team, social care team with the NHS and with various other organisations, including the third sector, who can all support our residents being as healthy as they possibly can in the future. What we know we need to do is to improve and we want to support that. And using Vision 2050 means that we can have that long-term thinking about what state do we want it to be in in the long-term future. One of them was climate change, obviously a very prescient question, one that's on everybody's lips at the moment and being talked about widely and internationally. We need to play our part in this borough. We do play our part with Climate Emergency Action Plan that we have, with councillor Dunn leading on that. We plant 20,000 trees, we look after our parks, we manage our estates fantastically well. And again, it's about taking that long-term approach, looking at how we can look after our environment and provide opportunities for people to do things differently. Despite lots of shouting around LTNs and cycle lanes and lime bikes or forest bikes or whatever, difficult decisions being made, not always 100% correct and I know it does annoy people, I get that. But we're taking those decisions because of what we want our borough to be in 25, 50 and 100 years' time. We know we need to have a modal shift from cars into other forms of transport. We know we need to work with our GLA colleagues in improving our public trains and buses and public transport. We know that needs to happen, as difficult as it might be and as challenging as it might be, we need to go there and do that to meet the challenges of climate change. And the last one was engagement. I mean, I think something like this speaks to everyone really and it speaks to everyone in lots of different ways. And you'll see that from the report and the responses we got, that people saw this in lots of different ways. But what it gave to me was a sense of real hope for the borough. That it's not just, we know this, it's not just politicians talking about what they want their borough to be like. We know it's people in our communities because they tell us. But now it's in black and white down there, it's absolutely fundamental to what we want our borough to be. That people, our residents, play a massive part in that and they are telling us that they want to be involved. And that's why they've got involved and that's what we want to hear, why we want to hear from them. And that's why this matters. And as I said already, whatever colour this borough is, whatever administration there is, I hope that any administration looks at this and makes this core to what they do for their four-year term of office.
Thank you very much councillor Bruce. So that draws the questions to a close. Can I now invite members to debate? Councillor Thompson.
Right, yeah. Following on from what I said at the Cabinet, long-term thinking is good. Obviously, timing matters as well. And publishing a glossy 2050 vision six months before the 2026 local elections, I don't think that's a strategy or a vision, it's just choreography. The brochure is beautifully designed, it's shiny and it's got a glossy finish, the sort you normally see on, say, a, I don't know, high-end sports car such as a, I don't know, Lamborghini. Let's be honest. Much of this document sounds a lot more like the first stage of the Labour Party manifesto. Because you did exactly the same before the last local elections, which led to one Hounslow. So this will probably go the way of that. Residents can spot, and we can spot, pre-election packaging very easily. Tomorrow's problems are actually here today. Despite what we heard earlier, the streets are full of leaves. The street lights, okay, they're not going to be dimmed even further. So that's £300,000 from your budget disappeared, because that was in your budget. But you did dim them before, so they are dim. And we are going out there and we are targeting and enforcing old age pensioners and mental health nurses while doing frankly not a lot for those who are really fly tipping in our borough.
Madam mayor, point of order please, point of order. 12.4 of the constitution, it would be handy if councillor Thompson, rather than launching his own pre-election address, would get to the point about and talk on this 2050 vision. And also, I'd just like to say that it shows some, it shows something of councillor Thompson's cynical mind-
Councillor Thompson and councillor Stroud Turp, let me rule on this please. I accept councillor Stroud Turp's point of order that, could we please keep it on to the point of the report itself?
Madam mayor, with respect, I think there's been a ruling in the past, that once I stand up, I can frankly say anything I want to, as long as it's legal and not discriminatory and all the other laws that are imposed.
Point of order again, madam mayor. Constitution 12.4 quite clearly says speeches must be directed to the question under discussion. It's not free licence for councillor Thompson to ramble.
Thank you councillor Stroud Turp. Councillor Thompson, would you mind just taking a seat a second? And I will consult with the monitoring officer. Thank you.
The next sentence is about the vision.
Okay, I've taken advice from the monitoring officer. Can you please keep it to the point of the question?
I shall, I shall.
Report, apologies. And I will add, and I will add back a little bit of time.
Brilliant, thank you, thank you. Okay. I was just really inspired by the deputy leader's comments, because obviously he was talking quite a lot about the present too. But going back to the vision, if you want an alternative vision, I'll share one with you. So I think in my vision, and this isn't going to cost you 10,000 quid, we need to think about responsibility and financial prudence. This vision often mentions the importance, and I fully agree, of a well-funded state. But it never says who is going to pay for it or how we're going to pay for it. Every pound that we spend comes from residents who are struggling now and I see no prospect of things getting any better in the future. This council has to, in the future, because it's not doing it now, live within its means, cut waste and focus on things that matter, not glossy publications, as you said, that are not a requirement and are not-
20 seconds councillor Thompson.
20 seconds.
20 seconds.
Right, I was going to talk about the importance of family, I was going to talk about the importance of opportunity, I was going to talk about the definite sense that we need to build social cohesion. The parallel lives mentioned in this report were first mentioned in 2011 by Ted Cantle. And we, as a council, when we run it, won a beacon award for our work on that area, but there's still more to do. A real vision for Hounslow has to be practical, it has to be affordable and it has to focus on everyday realities.
Councillor Raza.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Oh, hang on, no, sorry councillor Garywell. We need to keep it to the report. So if you wish to join in the debate after the ones I've already got on my list, certainly you can. But I'm going to go to councillor Raza first.
Thank you madam mayor. I would like to speak in praise in this great piece of important work. At the last Borough Council meeting, we discussed the State of the Borough report. This outlined some of the challenges that we face as a borough, but also the vast opportunities that are emerging from this. There are issues that in scrutiny we deal with all the time, issues like housing, youth, opportunities or social care. These are issues that can't be addressed by short-term fixes or sticky plaster politics. They require sustained, long-term focus, the kind of strategic thinking that is in this report. And for that reason, I happily support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Raza. Councillor Gill.
Point of order, madam mayor.
Yes councillor Mashisho.
Just a point of clarification, I wanted to just double check something with you. At the start of this meeting, on the procedure, you're on record for saying that speakers should not be disturbed whilst addressing the chamber. And yet, we see the same person interrupting whenever somebody on the Conservative side speaks. Can you give me some clarification as to who exactly is in charge? Is it you, madam mayor, or is it the person that keeps interrupting every time a Conservative member speaks?
Thank you. You've just done exactly what you're accusing the other side of. So yes, I, don't do it again.
Madam mayor, I have not interrupted you. I'm asking for clarification. I waited for councillor Raza to speak and then I asked you a question.
You're interrupting me again councillor Mashisho.
Do not accuse me of something I have not done.
So councillor Mashisho, as I said at the beginning, if you're raising a point of order, don't point at me. If you're, it's very disrespectful. If you're raising a point, if you're raising a point of order, as I said at the beginning, you need to give me the reference, the number of the section that you're referring to. And I'm asking everybody to be civil and not interrupt each other. I have come in when asked to, to stop that from happening. I will continue to do so. So I've asked you to be respectful to all members. We have different interpretations of that, I think. I'm impartial on this meeting councillor Mashisho and I- Thank you. So where were we? Councillor Gill.
Thank you madam mayor. Vision 2050, it's an excellent long-term vision for our future that is Hounslow's future. It's a collective team effort by all of us. It demonstrates a corporate desire to address the issues that are the root of much of the council's activity. I therefore approve this forward-looking vision for our future that is Hounslow's future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gill. Councillor Mashisho.
Thank you madam mayor. Where was I? Just repeating really what councillor, my colleague councillor Thompson mentioned. This to me seems like another glossy advert in preparation for 2026. That's what it seems like to me, because the themes that are in this document have been said before. In fact, they were said as far back as 2006. I remember reading about the vision for Hounslow early 2000s about this. So if we look to what we are going to be staring at in the next 25 years, how many visions do we have to listen to in order for us to actually fulfil something that we've actually set out? So I'll give you a perfect example for this. In 2026, we asked, well, they produced a report saying that they wanted a greener borough, a cleaner borough, a more community-based, community hubs. Where are we now, 25 years later nearly, 20 years later?
Can I, councillor Mashisho, can I ask you to direct it to the report that we are debating?
Yes. So the vision for me on paper is that it's supposed to encourage long-term view, long-term imagination. But the real problem councillors, the real problem is the vision that we need, that people need you to solve is right now. We need the streets to be cleaned, we need the housing stock to be available so people can stay in it. We need our roads to be resurfaced. That's the vision we want now. We don't want to wait 25 years. In 25 years, in 25 years, some of us, we won't be here. And in fact, if anything goes by, you know, the Labour group has lost 11 councillors in the last four years. In 25 years' time, they'll have zero. So you won't even be here.
Councillor Mashisho, that is not on point of the report.
Let's have a vision, let's have a vision that is about now. Let's have a vision that is about now. And to conclude, madam mayor, to conclude, I would say that we don't just need a vision, we actually need a mission. And that mission is to be more accountable so that we can deliver the services that we promise our residents. We need to be more transparent, we need a mission that does not hide behind poetry of language or numbers that just turn up. We need a mission that doesn't search for scapegoats every time something goes wrong. And madam mayor, we need a vision of 2050, a document that asks us to, asks us to dream. But residents don't need, don't need us to be just dreaming, they need us to be doing things. They need a council that stops writing reports to ministers, a council that starts proving things correct. Thank you madam mayor.
Councillor Cameron.
Thank you madam mayor. I would like to speak in praise of this report. This shows our commitment as a council to providing long-term solutions on the issues that matter. Too often, we are bogged down in the day-to-day demands of business as usual. This report asks us to think beyond the electoral cycle, about the issues that will shape our futures. The high level of public engagement with this report shows that residents also want us to take this approach. It will ensure that we give our children the skills they need to thrive, support our businesses to grow and adopt and provide our residents with the long-term support they need. Thank you again to everyone involved in carrying out this timely piece of work. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Cameron. Councillor Garywell, if it's on the report, did you want to speak?
Thank you madam mayor. Okay councillor Thompson, we have a zero tolerance policy in our council.
Councillor Garywell, it needs to be about the report if you want to speak.
Councillor Thompson said about the fine, I'm just coming back to him.
He did and I ruled it out of order because it wasn't on- So if you want to-
I'll leave it then. I'll speak to you councillor Thompson separately.
Thank you councillor Garywell. Councillor Dennison.
Thank you madam mayor. I have to say, this is probably the woolliest, wordiest, most unfocused and unfunded document I have ever read. It is a delusion to suggest that this is a vision, it is a word salad, a very fine word salad, but utterly useless in terms of focusing activity or offering benefit to any resident. Key omissions are action on poverty. 25% of kids in this borough grow up in poverty. What on earth is in this document for them? Absolutely nothing. Housing affordability. Which son or daughter of any member of our community can afford to live again as a next generation in this borough? It is simply too expensive for them to remain Bentonians, Hounslow residents, Feltham residents- It is simply too expensive for them to remain Bentonians, Hounslow residents, Felton residents, et cetera. It is too expensive for our sons and daughters to live here going forward. They have to move to other places if they are to set up home. And Heathrow, the biggest, most dynamic part of our local economy, barely gets a name check. And yet, your government has already taken decisions on its future without reference to any resident in this borough, and that will have tremendous impacts on absolutely everybody and completely undermine any commitment you ever made to climate change or improving the air quality of our area. And the other gross omission is it makes no reference whatsoever to the agent of change that we need in this borough. It says nothing about how this council is going to be remade into a council that can positively benefit this borough. You have completely destroyed democracy within your own group and your party. You don't listen to your members, you don't listen to your backbenchers, you don't listen to residents. How on earth can you ever expect to be an agent of change?
Councillor Dennison, please, can you keep it on the report itself?
Lastly, what else isn't in this report is the, how you are ever going to achieve financial competence where you have so completely riddled this council with debt.
20 seconds, councillor Dennison.
All that's missing, there is only one vision that people have now of this borough, and that's of a Labour councillor parking a Lamborghini in a disabled day.
Thank you, councillor Dennison, time up.
And that is what your legacy will be.
I'm going to, I'm going to take one more because then that's my list of the first-hand putters up. I'm going to take a comment from councillor Catherine Dunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the Tories have shown us that they don't have a vision, and with the exception of councillor McGregor, aren't interested in one either. Councillor McGregor does want people to engage, but doesn't think that we should spend any money engaging them. But I'm here to talk about climate change, and thank you to councillor Bowring, who raised the question earlier on that. Much of my portfolio around climate change and transport requires long-term thinking. It's the archetypal wicked issue, an existential threat, that needs us to think about the future as we plan our actions in the here and now. That the residents of this borough, and this is our residents' vision, see this as one of the forces of change affecting the borough and indeed society at large, highlights how important leadership and impact in this crucial area is. In 2019, I brought a motion declaring a climate emergency to this chamber, and we developed our climate emergency action plan to reduce emission, carbon emissions from council operations to net zero by 2030, and recognising that within the wider borough, we would do our best to influence the reduction of carbon emissions to net zero to reach the UK target of 2050. But the climate emergency action plan is not simply about counting carbon or carbon emissions, it's about people. Our updated plan, which is due to go to Cabinet next month, aligns with our wider corporate plan priorities and aims to make the borough resilient to the impacts of climate change, like the ones mentioned by councillor Bowring. It will improve residents' lives. The benefits that we expect to see will be cheaper-to-heat homes, better homes, cleaner air, safer walking and cycling facilities, new skills and job opportunities, because everything is interlinked, everything is related. It's not just about climate, it's also about homes, it's also about health, it's also about transport. This will shift the focus from short-term fixtures, beloved by the bros on the benches opposite, God knows what's happening there, to outcomes that genuinely improve the lives of our residents, creating lasting value, strengthening community pride and boosting economic growth and sustainability in the borough, which we see in the aims of the vision 2050.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. So I'm afraid, I'm mindful of time, and so I'm drawing that to a close. I think we've had substantial debate on it. Can I ask councillor Bruce to sum up, please?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's funny, councillor Thompson started with, as I said, at Cabinet, and then went on to say a load of stuff that he didn't dare say at Cabinet until he's backed up by people shouting around him and calling and crowing around.
Madam Mayor, point of order, please. We've just had an offensive word spoken.
What are we doing? What are we doing?
Point of order under what? Whatever the order is for swearing in this place at a person. Okay.
May I?
I don't know what it is, I haven't got the...
I can clarify because it's aimed at me.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I can repeat the words.
I'd rather you didn't. I haven't heard any swearing, but I would remind everybody to...
But I have heard the swearing is directed at me, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, I think...
How do I, how do I report that to you?
You report that to the monitoring officer after the meeting, but I would remind everybody that they need to remain civil throughout the meeting, please, as I stated at the beginning.
Yeah, so I've been sworn at in a public meeting.
Okay, councillor Mashisho, I've asked you to...
By councillor Dunn.
Councillor Mashisho, I've asked you to report that to the monitoring officer after the meeting. This, this is a council meeting where we are discussing residents' issues, and we need to remain doing that. If there are issues, you are welcome to report that after the meeting to the monitoring officer. Can we please continue with the meeting? Thank you.
Okay, just having the meeting, that's all. Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Dunn, sorry, councillor Bruce, you can continue, and you've got another additional time to do so.
Thank you. Okay, what are we doing now? Manifesto and corporate plan. They clearly didn't bother to read the corporate plan, they don't know what it is, that's the plan for now. Our manifesto is based on what we want to do in 2022, what we look as important for the borough in the next four years. That's what we, given the borough, that's what we've been voted in to do, and that's what we're enacting right now. 2020 is different, 2020, sorry, 2050 is different to that, because it looks longer term. But as has been said by other members already, it's not just about us, this is 2,000 residents that we've engaged, a snip at £10,000 for a year-long engagement, to understand exactly what residents are looking for, exactly what residents hope for, and they have just told you, 2,000 residents and beyond, that they don't care what you say. It's irrelevant to them. That's the most egregious part of this. It's not fancy words, councillor Dennison standing up and saying some things that I'm sure we all disagree, most of us, certainly on this side, we all disagree with, but it's the fact that they are not interested in what anyone here has to say, and it's about them standing and talking, quite frankly, a load of rubbish. This is a fantastic report and worth every single penny, and something that we can all be proud of as a borough, that takes us in to the next 25 years. I move the report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. So we're going to move to the vote. I remember to, I need to ask firstly, for all those in favour of both the one for noting on the front of the agenda and the one for agreement, all those in favour, please raise your hands. All those against, please raise your hands. And any abstentions, please raise your hands. Thank you. The motion is carried, sorry, the report is carried, not the motion. So next, on to agenda item six. We now come to agenda item six, which is again a reference from the last meeting of the Cabinet, held on the 11th of November 25, relating to Treasury Management mid-year report. Again, can I ask councillor Tom Bruce to propose and introduce the report in councillor Radewatt's absence? You have five minutes, councillor Bruce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very happy to propose this mid-year Treasury report, a report which demonstrates responsible political leadership, what responsible political leadership looks like in difficult times. While the national economic picture remains volatile and challenging for families and businesses, this Labour administration is protecting Hounslow's financial sustainability and delivering value for money for our residents. Let's be clear, we know this, we know what's coming, they will tell you otherwise, but this report tells us exactly what we need to know about the state of our borough's finances, and they are in excellent health. Every action here...
Members, can I please ask you to remain civil?
Every action set out here is firmly in line with the Treasury Management strategy adopted in February, and we are seeing the results of that disciplined approach. In just six months, we have reduced total borrowing, a reduction of £13.3 million. We've reduced borrowing in both the general fund and the housing revenue account, while maintaining our capacity to invest in the borough's priorities. They will talk about money, they will talk about borrowing, they will talk about investments. What they will not talk about is what that money does. I'm sure we'll get to it very soon. As I say again, we are investing in the borough's priorities. Meanwhile, we've innovated as well, raising £1 million through our first community municipal investment, there's some words there to get out, for green community investments, giving residents a direct stake in our shared future. And let's be clear, Hounslow has recorded no breaches of potential indicators in this period, no emergency measures, no financial chaos and no surprises. This stands in stark contrast to the opposition across the benches over there, who in 2024 introduced an unfunded budget amendment that would have frittered away 8.8 million of our reserves. It is shocking that they criticised the way we are running the council, when they have consistently argued for decisions that would have increased our financial exposure and risked our stability. Indeed, when you look at one of our neighbouring Conservative-led councils, they are in complete financial disarray as they apply for exceptional financial support. I'm thankful we are not in their position. Tonight's report is proof that this Labour administration is competent, disciplined and ambitious for the borough, doing all we can to protect our residents and manage public money responsibly despite the toughest of economic climates. I move the report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Can I ask for a second, can I ask for somebody to second the report, please?
Anyone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will second the report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you very much. So again, this is a report from another council body, and in this case, again Cabinet. We will first have questions stage and then a debate stage. So we will start with questions for councillor Bruce on the report. I will go with the same form as I did before and take several at a time. So do any members have questions? Can you please keep your hands up for a second? Thank you very much. I'm going to start with councillor Elmsley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your kind words about my marriage as well, I wasn't expecting that. I don't want this to be the Lampton show, but I do want to talk about appendix one and ask a question on that. It states, appendix one of this report, that loans issued to Lampton are asset-backed, which basically means that there is a clear route to recovery if the worst happens. But section 4.13 of the Hounslow Company's Q2 Performance Report states that Lampton's loan-to-value ratio is above 100%, so the value of their assets are actually worth less than the money we've loaned them. Doesn't councillor Bruce accept that that is an exceptionally risky position to be in?
Thank you, councillor Elmsley. Councillor Bruce, do you want to take one of them, one at a time, or do you want to take three? Take three, okay, fine. I'm going to go to councillor Mosley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also about appendix one, I'll paraphrase, but it says that subsidy control regulations prohibit lending at below-market rates, and Lampton pays a high interest rate to the council and the council pays on its borrowing, ensuring a net positive return to the general fund. This would suggest that lending money to Lampton is a prudent way of ensuring council taxpayers see a net positive return on any money we lend Lampton for the benefit of members opposite.
Councillor Mosley, is that a question?
With a cabinet member, be able to explain why this is the case.
Okay, thank you. And next, I'll go to councillor McGregor.
And I want to ask, in this report, what funding is going to meet the needs of the 42.5% of this borough who are subject to social deprivation, have been so ever since this Labour Party took control?
Is there a particular section of the report that you're referring to, councillor McGregor?
It's entirely missing.
Okay.
Councillor Bruce, if I can hand over to you.
What are we doing for some of the poorest residents? What we're doing is we're building homes for people. What we're doing is creating services. What we're doing is, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought we were meant to be quiet, I thought there was a problem over there. We're building homes for people, we're providing services for people. We are day-to-day dealing with those issues that mean that we can tackle that and improve the quality of people's lives. It's not easy, the economic climate that we've been left by 14 years of absolute shambles at a national level. Particularly, particularly one 42-day premiership that absolutely crashed the economy and has left us in even more of a mess than the others left us in, should be talked about more by the opposition, but they don't, they don't. They like to think about frivolities, they don't talk about the serious issues that affect our residents. So we're building homes, we're providing services. Yes, it's asset-backed, he talks about, well, is that a risk? I mean, having a mortgage on a home is a risk, in the same way that providing money to Lampton to buy those homes for the borough's residents is also a risk. It's the same thing we're doing there, but what we are doing is providing those homes and ensuring people live in safe and secure accommodation. And lending Lampton money where people have an asset, a home to live in, sorry, the borough has an asset, people have a home to live in, and that pays us back over time, over 40, 30, 40, 50 years at a greater rate, is absolutely the right type of way we should be managing our finances. It just shows their lack of understanding, whether deliberate or otherwise, about how our finances are organised.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Can I go to councillor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for setting out what seems to be a very healthy Treasury Management report. I see the green investment opportunity reached its target of raising 1 million. Would the lead member be able to provide more detail on the types of projects this money will fund and whether we can expect to see further rounds of community investment in the future? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gill. Councillor Garywell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought councillor Gill was going to say, where's the money gone? That's what you say when he was a Conservative about finances. Just a quick question, look, I really, I really admire, the mic's here, I really admire what councillor Bruce has done. It's not his cabinet portfolio, he's stepping in, he's a fantastic man on this council. So I really appreciate it, and he's on a sticky wicket, you know, the ashes is on, let's use a cricket analogy. My question is, if he's saying, or the report is saying, not he, that the financier, financier is such good conditions, and we're, we're very strong in terms of our financial prudence, why is there a 91 million overspend forecast in the next three years in this borough? And look, Madam Mayor, we all want this council to succeed. We all represent residents and care about these residents, so we want the finance of this borough to succeed, but it's on a high alert, Madam Mayor.
You've asked your question, you'll have a chance to debate in the next section, if you want to, but have you finished your question?
Well, just, yeah, that's fine, I'll come in later.
Thank you. And councillor Tac.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to see the total borrowing in this report has reduced by 13.3 million. This would run some counter to a lot of speculations and hysteria being spread by the opposition here. Would the lead member be able to tell us what has driven this fall in borrowing?
Thank you. Councillor Bruce.
Sorry, just trying it down so I don't forget. Green investment, absolutely. Councillor Gill, over the next five years, we aim to raise 5 million from the community to fund local decarbonisation efforts, from energy efficient upgrades to renewable... to fund local decarbonisation efforts, from energy efficient upgrades to renewable energy installation. It's a bold, community-driven approach in tackling climate change. We've seen the first round this year, and we will have four more over the next four and a bit years, incredibly important for our borough. Overspend of 91, what did you say, 91 million pounds, was that the words you used? I mean, again, I come back to the fact that we have been left in a terrible situation by a national government who doesn't care about the people it serves, who doesn't care about the finances, who has left Hounslow in a terrible situation. Year on year, we've had cut after cut after cut after cut from national government, where we have had to find funds to meet the needs of our borough's residents. I'm delighted to have been on this council over the last 15, almost 16 years, where we have been able to do that, financially prudent, while also meeting the needs of the borough's residents, building homes, delivering services, and bringing a quality of life that others might not have. So overspends are there, and they are transparent in putting that down on paper, but as we have done in the last 15 years of me being on the council, we will continue to do so from beyond May 26, in meeting that demand, in meeting that need, and being financially prudent. And lastly, it was about the fall in borrowing. It's mainly been driven by the HRA, where borrowing reduced from 422 million to about 409 million. Basically, we've paid off more of our debt than the borrowing we undertook. I mean, I think we've got to look at this, and this will probably come out, I'm sure, in the debates somewhere, but we cannot imagine this borrowing and this debt as one lump thing that goes over there, and then it has to be repaid off, and oh, it's incredibly debt, you know, that's not how council finances work. There's some borrowing here, at different rates, for different lengths, that we repay, that others repay us, that we then undertake some more at different rates and at different lengths, and that's outlined in the table, they've ignored that so far. And how we manage that, meeting the needs of our residents while also looking at the financial markets, has been nothing but astonishing in the last 14, 15 years, considering the state that they have left us in, in local government, it's not just us, because other councils are going bust. That's Tory and Labour and Lib Dem and no overall control. They make it out that these difficult financial circumstances are unique to Hounslow. We all know, we all know they're not, and in fact, if they really understood, or actually I think they do, but they're telling you they don't, they would know we are in a much healthier position than almost anyone else. They'll laugh about it, they'll say I'm wrong, they'll say we're wrong, they say we don't know, but that's not what the numbers say, that's not what other councils say, it's what we know. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. I have one further question from councillor Dennison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just one easy question for you, Tom. Could you confirm whether or not this council will be applying to the government for exceptional financial support?
No.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. So no further questions, we will move on to the debates, oh, yes, we will move on to the debate stage. Have you got a question, councillor Todd? Apologies.
Councillor Bruce, you heard the figure of 91 million pounds, and the related publicity into the huge drain on the reserves. What do you say about the dilution, of the consistent dilution of the reserves to an unacceptable figure? You purport that the Treasury account is running in effective fashion?
Councillor Todd, is that the question?
Wait, it was a water one, okay.
Thank you.
What I say to a question about reserves is if we'd listened to you, we would be 8.8 million pounds worse off in our reserves this year than we are currently. That's what I'd say about reserves.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move to the debate, so those wishing to speak, please put your hands up. Okay. I'm going to start with councillor Stradturk.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Councillor Garywell said, this one, that you want this council to succeed, I mean, they don't, do they? They don't. This report irks them. You know what irks them? Because it's success, comparative success, and they've got nothing to complain about. They're digging up, they didn't even watch the BBC News last night. The BBC News, BBC London, actually reported that London, the 32 London boroughs in the city are currently one billion pounds black hole, which is likely to rise to 4.7 by 28. We are not, we are not part of that, we are financially well-managed. Seven of the London councils are currently in receipt of exceptional financial support, and that number is going to go up. What the Tories can't bear is that we have managed this council's finances extremely well, we have been a good steward of those finances, we have rejected their claims to sell things off, to dip into reserves, to not increase budgets when we've been able to do so. And you can see, you can see, let me give you an example of this. Kent County Council, unfortunately, Reform managed to con the good voters of Kent by promising no council tax increases, and we all saw the frago on TV, when the penny's dropped and they do have to increase council tax to the maximum. We are not trying to con our voters, we are not making nonsense, false promises, we are actually being realistic with our residents, we are managing the budget well, we are looking after our money, and we are aiming for the future. Just returning to the 2050 report, and this is an example of where it sticks, before I retired in the military, we had two sorts of people, those who could have a strategic vision and think we were going to be in the future, and those who dabbled in the weeds and could not see the way ahead. Here we have weed dabblers, here we have a strategic vision. I thought I would really commend this report.
Thank you, councillor Stradturk. Councillor McGregor?
Madam Mayor, this matter is greatly perplexing. I've never, ever set an unbalanced budget, never, ever set an unbalanced budget, and the shadow budget in 2024 was designed to ensure that the budget was balanced. There were no contingencies. Every year, for the last 15 years, we've had directors of operational units applying for contingency towards the end of the financial year, every year. And if you think that is good management, when you have contingencies, when you're meant to set a balanced budget, then you are not capable of financial management. The other point I would raise is, I'm not sure whether the BBC actually spliced the report they gave us about borough councils in London. It's quite likely that the statistics they use were specially chosen, and that the editorial was definitely biased. I no longer regard the BBC as a fountain of untrammeled news and value, it's a great tragedy, but there we are. There are lots of other tragedies, including the fact that so many people in our borough don't aspire to actually vote, because they feel that they're not part of the process, they feel they are forgotten, they are socially deprived either by education or by housing, and you have been in charge for so long and nothing has happened. It's got bigger. People are being rescued by universal credit, and that's damnable, because we create serfdom. It's an issue that's important, because this budget is the procedure, or this Treasury report is the procedure, for the main budget debate on March the 8th. Now, for God's sake, what are you doing? March the 8th? We used to have the budget debate in mid-January, we used to have budget papers produced before Christmas, there's nothing like that here. We are actually not necessarily in chaos, but we are quite close to administrative lockdown. We're not getting the information we need, and the financial information disclosed here is statutory. There is no analysis of the mark-to-market values of the assets underlying it, the underlying balance sheet is riddled with problems. One thing I was very, very pleased about was the fact that in 2018, we received the good news, as a result of the work I did from 2006 onwards, we now had a digitised land registry entry for every property we owned. If that was then revalued now, given the problems we have with repairs and renewals for those people at the other end of the spectrum, the mark-to-market value is unlikely to be the numbers that are quoted here.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Can I ask councillor Smith, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to highlight one part of the report, I'd like to congratulate councillor Dunn for her work on what is named in the report as the municipal community investment tranche. This is a very unglamorous name for the Hounslow green investment opportunity. This has raised over a million pounds to be invested in green causes across our borough, while also generating a return on investment. It's proof that green investment is an opportunity and not a burden. Green financing schemes such as this offer an innovative source of funding, which allows councils to borrow at a lower rate than would be available through the Public Works Loan Board. It helps reduce our interest costs on green projects and saves taxpayers' money. For that reason in particular, and for many others, I'm very happy to support this latest report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Councillor Garywell?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the debate so far has been quite interesting. Councillor Bruce unfortunately sounds a bit like Rachel Reeves, and we'll hear this tomorrow, where wherever there's financial mishaps or fiscal irresponsibility, it's always someone else's fault than their own. We will hear Rachel Reeves stand up tomorrow and take excuses far back as the 2008 financial crash, when guess who was in government? The Labour Party. She will blame Covid, she will blame Brexit, she will blame the Conservative government over the last 14 years.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
No, here we go.
Seriously, Madam Mayor, and just for councillor Michita's benefit, 13.14 of the, allows me to speak at any time if it's a point of order, I'm raising a point of order under 12.4, that this is not relevant to this, he's talking about a budget which we don't even know about yet, so if we could leave it to this, that would be really useful.
Thank you, councillor Stradturk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think councillor Stradturk is right, we don't know about this budget. When I say we, I mean his own benches, because they're talking about net zero, when green levies will be cut on utility bills tomorrow by the Chancellor, so let's just take it easy a little bit when we're talking about facts and news.
Okay.
But I will take it back to this, Madam Mayor. Quite frankly, the council found themselves in this situation, and their own report says there are a range of reasons why the council's financial position has worsened over the last 18 months, and that's what councillor Radewatt said in his report. Personally, Madam Mayor, I can only think of one, and that's councillor Radewatt himself. It's his portfolio, his responsibility, he leads his cabinet in administration, so unfortunately he's not here tonight, and I appreciate councillor Bruce has stepped in, so this is not on him, but I think the responsibility lies with him personally. We know that, and he said that high inflation is also baked into all expenses, it's because as a council, or the finance brief under him locked in 9% or 10% interest rates when we were on a rate-cutting cycle in the Bank of England, actually a rate-cutting cycle that began under the Conservative government, because of prudent financial spend, so that was a choice that was made in his portfolio. We, I was part of the Labour group for seven and a half years, Madam Mayor, as many know. Earlier this year, a lot of my colleagues here, if not all of them, were in that meeting when councillor Radewatt came back to us and said, group, I've overspent by 28.3 million this year, I need your help to cut some expenditure, which, you know, a lot of his cabinet colleagues helped with, and also dip into reserves. So we can sit nowhere, we can sit here, Madam Mayor, and have some bravado and point of orders by the chief whip, but we were all in that meeting and we know the facts. I think councillor Mosley also made a point about dipping into reserves and Lampton Group and them being a worthy creditor, they missed three out of four payments last year, Madam Mayor. Now it's above 100% of their assets, so we're not going to get mortgages for 105%, 110% LTV on houses, so why should they be given the same respect in that regard? Thank you, Madam Mayor, these are their fiscal choices, and it should remain with them only.
Councillor Marina Schelmer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to ask councillor McGregor not to be blasphemous in taking the Lord name in vain in this meeting. You said, for God's sake, yeah. So we've seen the Tories' opposite be accused of peddling a chicken little conspiracy theory about the state of the borough's finances, but isn't that, doing chicken little, a little disservice? At least he genuinely believed that the sky was about to fall in. The opposition seem to be generating a lot of noise about a report in which no prudential indicators were breached, our borrowing was reduced, and no difficulties are anticipated in maintaining compliance with these indicators for the remainder of the year or in future years.
Thank you, councillor Schelmer. Councillor Dennison?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me for my rather gruff voice. I was quite bemused by the, I'm not going to call it illiteracy, I'm just going to call it, all right, illiteracy, of the administration, the idea that all of our problems here in Hounslow are caused by 14 years of Conservative rule, it's really tempting, guys, but actually, most of them now are caused by 14 months of Labour rule in government, and we're going to hear a little bit more about that, unfortunately, tomorrow. This hokey-cokey idea, Tom, that, you know, that is a little bit in and a little bit out, a little bit over here, a little bit over there, that really isn't how the council's finances or Treasury Management actually works. I commend you, I think you're right, the Treasury Management team in this council is unparalleled in its ability to juggle and help this council manage. But to be honest, the one thing it's not doing is it's not telling you, perhaps because I think you'd be too fit, that you are in really deep pool. Two months ago, just two months ago, I said that we could expect in November more news about the one billion pounds' worth of debt that this council is heading to, it was at that time going to be in 28, 29. In this report, it's very clear, we hit those buffers one year earlier, two months more of you and one more year lost in terms of the time you have to get a grip on this council's finances. They are in a dire state, and one of the biggest ones, we are going to have a debate upon it, but one of the biggest causes of that is one-third of your debt is now driven by the Lampton Group, one-third of your debt. And let's be clear, when it says it's asset-backed, every penny that Lampton spent on those properties was borrowed from this council, and three-quarters of every penny that we lent to Lampton was borrowed from somebody else. It's not asset-backed, that's what you're going to have to sell in order to finance this council if Lampton goes under. And the idea that, you know, these assets are safe, that we will be able to use them, etc., again, complete nonsense, because if it wasn't a wholly-owned company, every single prudential rule would have been broken, lending them so much money with no prospect, no prospect that they will ever be able to pay it back.
20 seconds, councillor Dennison.
Even on their current operations, they have been unable to earn a profit, ever, overall, ever. This is not like a mortgage, where you have an income that maybe you could pay your payments with, Lampton cannot afford the 10 million it owes you now. If it doesn't, can't afford the 10 million now, how on earth is it going to survive next year or the year after? It is desperately necessary for you to get a grip and solve this problem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been a lot of discussion about the Lampton Group, and I'm sure much of this will be covered when we debate the Conservative motion later on this evening. However, Appendix One of the report makes However, appendix one of the report makes very clear. Without Lambton, the council would face two costly alternatives of either internalising these services, which would increase operational burden, or outsource them to private providers, which would likely be at a higher cost with reduced flexibility. The Conservatives are very quick to criticise, but they don't seem to be able to offer us any answers. Would they rather we continue our prudential investment strategy, or do they in fact want to outsource delivery to private providers, thus making big profits from the public purse?
Thank you, councillor Said. Councillor Emsley.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. I couldn't resist the chicken little bait. I actually think there's only one type of poultry in this council chamber, and it's the ostriches burying their heads in the sand opposite us. I feel like I've been transported into Pyongyang while sitting here. Tractor sales are up, comrades, peace is war. This report is a great success. Well, councillor Bruce said the numbers don't lie. He's actually absolutely right, so I've got three numbers for him. Number one, one affordable house built in this, started in this borough this financial year. He said they're building houses, they're proud of one being built in this financial year. Lambton is set to make another £2.2 million loss this financial year. He's proud of that. He says Lambton is delivering for this borough. And the third number, madam mayor, it's the forecast £90 million black hole. They're proud that they've done that. I think they need to stop casting around to blame others and start stepping up and tackling this mess head-on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Emsley. Councillor Bowring.
Thank you, madam mayor. So there's a lot of Lambton bashing, and a lot of it has been around the numbers, and the numbers are important. But there's something else that's important, and that's what Lambton are doing. We just heard from councillor Emsley that we've built one affordable home. The correct number is 629. So it's not just about the numbers. I talked earlier and said that climate change is one of the biggest problems we face. If that's number one, then housing could well be the second. Housing is a massive issue in this borough, and so the fact that we've chosen to invest in 629 homes shows that not only is our approach one that invests in homes for our residents, but all the loans issued to Lambton are backed by tangible assets, ensuring the council's lending is not exposed to undue risk. These assets provide a safeguard in the event of any viability concerns within the companies, but at the same time, providing homes to residents who need it the most. So I'm left feeling, are the Tories and their cheerleaders being deliberately misleading, or do they just identify as financially confused?
Thank you, councillor Bowring. I'm going to take the last hand as councillor Sampson. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, madam mayor, the affordable homes. Labour councils build more affordable homes. Hounslow has the fourth highest completion rate since, this year, 216, is it stable? All, sorry?
No, no, he's disagreeing with your numbers.
Right, okay.
But you're right, carry on.
Okay. All five Tory councils manage just 168 affordable homes. Okay? All three Lib Dem councils manage just 14. So we sit on our record.
Thank you very much, councillor Sampson. So I think there's been substantial debate on that, so I would like to ask councillor Bruce to sum up, please, before the vote.
When I was younger, I remember watching this programme, I think it was the Royal Variety Performance.
Is this speaking to?
Yeah, I am speaking.
Report?
Councillor Mashisho, I don't know yet, so I'm just listening.
And I think it was like 50 years of the Royal Variety or something like that, and there's, it was a clip of Les Dawson going up and playing the piano. I don't know if anybody knows the clip I'm talking about. It goes up and he plays a bit, and then he plays a wrong note, and everyone laughs, it's fine, and he plays it again, and he tries to play this thing, and he's getting it wrong, and it's very funny, and everybody's really enjoying this. And I said to my mum something like, 'Oh God, he's terrible at the piano', and she said, 'No, he's actually an exceptional pianist. He's an exceptional pianist.' And the reason it's funny is because he's an exceptional pianist and he can do it wrong. So I'm reminded of the opposition here, and particularly actually councillor Dennison, because I know he knows what he's talking about. Like Les Dawson could play the piano very well, he actually knows what he's talking about. Unlike Les Dawson, playing the piano wrong, that's not funny. His inaccuracies and nonsense he's peddling there is not funny. It's scary, and he's wrong.
Madam mayor, on a point of order, madam mayor, item one, rule of the chair, I understood you said some of your people are being kind.
But truthful and necessary as well, and it's truthful and necessary to say that he knows what he's talking about and is truthfully, sorry, not truthfully, telling something else. Absolutely unacceptable to be scary and fearful and worry people, because it's not true, and the numbers don't lie, and the numbers do say that we are financially prudent, we manage our money well, and we invest in the people of this borough. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Bruce. Can we now turn to the formal vote? Oh, sorry, no, we don't need to turn to the, there's no need for a formal vote. Oh no, sorry, reading my, sorry, can I ask for a vote? Can I first ask for all in favour? Oh, sorry, yes, I've got too many notes. Can we note the reports, please? Thank you. I got all excited, I wanted an extra vote. It's been a long day. Right, so moving to item, agenda item seven. We now move to agenda item seven. Sadly, as members are aware, with the recent passing of councillor Foot, who is mentioned in this report before the agenda was published, sorry, since the agenda was published. In addition, councillor Keaney is with us this evening, yes, sorry, councillor Keaney is with us this evening, and so as such, the recommendation has been amended to remove the names, their names from it, and this revised wording can be found in the supplementary agenda. So therefore, this agenda item only relates now to councillor Jagdish Sharma, who is unwell. So I would like to thank both councillor Raduak and councillor Thompson as the two political group leaders for confirming that there is general cross-party support for this item. However, may I check that there are no other members that wishes, that wish to comment? Yes, councillor McGregor?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm concerned about the complete lack of democracy over these issues. We're going to have some people who are not represented or council members and not be able to talk to other council members because they're not here. It's not appropriate.
I'm not. I need to just clarify what your question was, councillor McGregor. I'm not sure I understood what you said. Oh, I see.
Madam mayor, we've dropped two people from the motion. Surely we need a formal motion with just the one name on it. We need a formal motion rather than amending the last one.
I don't think we do, councillor McGregor. The motion is exactly the same for three people. One of them has sadly died, another one is here, and therefore it's exactly the same motion. So I don't think that that is the case. I will check. Oh, and it has been amended in the supplementary agenda, so there's no need. Any other questions? Yes, councillor Mashisho.
Thank you, madam mayor. Just like to wish our best wishes to councillor Sharma. I think this is an opportunity for us to pay tribute to his service to this borough for many, many years, and I hope for many more years to come.
Thank you, councillor Mashisho. Councillor Dennison. Certainly, you may. Thank you. Can I ask for a second? Okay, yes, many, thank you. And therefore that's, we are. Then we move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. We'll note the council's best wishes to councillor Sharma. Right, we now move to item eight. I'd like again to thank the two political group leaders for confirming that there is general cross-party support for this item. However, may I check that there are no members that wish to comment? In that case, can I invite councillor Bruce to propose and introduce the report? Oh, no, it's done. Sorry, it's been a long day. We're just going to go straight to the vote. Can I ask, all those in favour? Any against? And any abstentions? Thank you very much. The motion is passed. Then to agenda item nine, appointment of statutory scrutiny officer. Again, we have general cross-party support for this item, so I'd like to suggest we go straight to the vote unless there are other members who wish to comment. Thank you. In that case, we'll go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Noted. And that's also agreed. So now we move to agenda item 10, appointments to committees and other bodies. We now come to the appointments, which is a standing item on the agenda. First of all, I point out a small error in the agenda. The words 'acting' need to be removed from the title of the chief executive. Agreed. Are there any nominations? Any nominations? Then thank you. And all those in favour to agree? Not a vote, just agreed, sorry. I'm flailing. Agenda item 11, decisions taken under urgent arrangements. I asked members to note there are none, so we can move on to agenda item 12. So agenda item 12 is a motion proposed by councillor Emsley and seconded by councillor Gary Well. So we now move on to the first motion, which can be found on agenda item 12. Members will also observe for the supplementary agenda that an amendment to the motion has been proposed. I now invite councillor Emsley to propose the motion. You have five minutes.
Yes, thank you very much, madam mayor. I'm going to emulate councillor Bruce, and I'm going to be truthful. I think it's necessary, but I don't think it's necessarily very kind. The state of Lambton, the lack of effective scrutiny, the way, the very real impact it's having on our borough's precarious financial position will matter for every single one of our residents and businesses who we represent. I want to just begin by setting out a little bit of context for this motion. The Lambton Group is wholly owned by this council. It has to date made cumulative losses of £15 million. Latest reports show that it is set to make a further £2 million loss this year. It owes Hounslow Council nearly a quarter of a billion pounds. Now, these sums might not sound a lot for Hounslow's Lamborghini-owning Labour Party, but make no mistake, the Lambton Group is in trouble, and it's happened under their watch. They've used taxpayer money to give the group cash advances when it couldn't afford to pay loan interest. They've transferred core services to the group despite a history of underperformance, according to their own monitoring reports. They've taken out a £174 million loan to fund the expansion of the Lambton empire. They are gambling with taxpayers' money, and it is putting us all at risk. But despite regular warnings and pleas for proper scrutiny, the administration is shirking its responsibility. A third of shareholder committee meetings cancelled. Scrutiny on Thursday is being asked to welcome a proposal for a Lambton business plan that hasn't even been written yet. The oversight of this company, and by extension the financial management of this borough, is in chaos. Now, to borrow a recent analogy from councillor Raduak, it's a lot like being in a crowded theatre that's currently on fire. But instead of doing everything they can to put the fire out, the people in charge are bolting the emergency exit shut. They're refusing to take out the fire extinguishers because acknowledging the fire exists might make them look bad. It doesn't have to be this way. We can choose competence over chaos. We can bring back democratic accountability to this chamber. We can create a truly independent process for scrutinising Lambton. The proposals we're making today should be welcomed by everyone across this chamber. Because if you believe like we do that Lambton presents a financial risk, then these changes help to steady the ship and begin unpicking the mess. But even if you believe, like some opposite, that the Lambton Group is fine and its losses aren't serious, you should also welcome these proposals. If there's nothing wrong, why fear extra scrutiny and extra accountability? Now, in a few moments councillor Bruce will stand up and he'll give his audition to replace councillor Raduak as leader of the Labour group next. May he'll pin the blame on Lambton's poor performance, on everyone and everything other than this council. Don't let him distract you. The key question he needs to answer when he stands up is why doesn't he believe that Lambton needs better scrutiny and accountability? Why won't he give this council chamber a vote on future Lambton loans? Why doesn't he think there should be an attendance requirement for the shareholder committee? This evening, there is a simple choice. If you're a councillor who cares about your communities, cares about your local businesses, cares about the future financial position of this borough, you'll vote for greater transparency, for greater accountability, and for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Emsley. Can I ask councillor Gary Well to second the motion, please?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm going to try and stand up for this one, even though the mic doesn't reach that high. Thank you, madam mayor. I was inside this Labour administration and the previous one for seven and a half years, as I said, so far, and a pattern of denial and deflection over financial mismanagement, Lambton in particular, unfortunately, is nothing new. Jack presented damning facts, councillor Emsley, sorry, presented damning facts. This is what I experienced. I was in cabinet meetings, in Labour groups, scrutinising the Lambton board, its chief executive, its C-suite, also the cabinet members, like councillor Lambert, when he had the portfolio and other ones, and I was told to stay quiet. I saw consistent reluctance to ask difficult questions from everybody, even when problems were obvious, particularly in this administration since 2022, where silencing scrutiny has become prevalent, and the leader and his head honcho, Mr councillor John Shalter, the overbearing whip who won't let us speak without pointless point of orders tonight, for example.
Point of, point of, point of order.
Right on cue, sir, right on.
Right on cue, obviously.
Councillor, councillor John.
You know why I'm intervening. This is not on the subject.
Councillor Gary Well, it's not on the subject of the motion.
And I think you probably see why we didn't let him speak.
Councillor Shalter, please.
We've heard it, councillor Shalter. Turn the mic off, please. Scrutiny across the borough has collapsed, and when scrutiny collapses, accountability disappears, madam mayor, and that's exactly what's happened here. And to borrow the words of Ronald Reagan used when he left his own party, 'I didn't leave the party, the party left me.' That is exactly how I feel about what this leadership has become, abandoning pragmatism, abandoning scrutiny, and abandoning above all responsibility. This is not just financial management, mismanagement, madam mayor, it's ideological obsession with running services through an ever-expanding council-owned company regardless of competence. The current leadership is fixate on expanding council-owned companies, convinced that they can run services best than anyone else. I actually believe, madam mayor, and I'm sure some of my colleagues here would believe, a mix of public and private ownership to deliver for our residents, give them value for money is probably the best route forward. But unfortunately, ideologically, the party opposite cannot do that, and that's a real shame, madam mayor, because it's our, unfortunately, our residents that suffer. So one might say that our leader, because this falls on him, is the Rachel Reeves of Hounslow, madam mayor, addicted to spending, creating fiscal black holes, and then increasing taxes on residents and businesses through council tax and business rate hikes to paper over.
20 seconds, councillor Gary Well.
Gaps and cracks whilst always blaming someone else, and we've seen some of that tonight. So in summary, madam mayor, I'll just go straight to conclusion. I'd rather let and trust councillor Roman park my car legally. Councillor Sidhu manage my legal services ethically. And also
Thank you councillor Gary Well.
over councillor Raduak managing my finances, Madam Mayor. And that's a real shame for this council.
Thank you councillor Gary Well. So we now come to the proposed amendment, which members can find in the supplementary agenda. I invite councillor Tom Bruce to introduce it and speak for five minutes.
Thank you. Wow. So the Tories love talking about the money we've lent to Lampton. That's fine. But they are less keen on talking about 629 homes that this has paid for. It's the same old Tories. They know the price of everything and the value of nothing. 629 families who would be otherwise waiting for a home. 629 homes generating rental income and an asset value. Potentially millions of pounds of temporary accommodation spent that actually we've avoided. Labour builds homes and we invest in public services. It is the Tories' sticking plaster politics that is the real danger to our public finances. It was the approach we saw Conservative governments take for 14 years. Yes, I'm going to say it, because it's true, necessary, but maybe not kind. They aren't interested in taking action on Lampton. What they're proposing is inaction on housing and homelessness. So Lampton's primary purpose is to deliver public services, which I know the Tories aren't all that interested in doing. Actually, it's interesting councillor Gary Well said about a mix, which, if he was paying attention to the last seven and a half years, we actually do have in this borough. So there you go, fantastic. The money lent to them has paid for hundreds of homes for our residents. These homes have a value, but they are also worth more than just lines on a balance sheet. It's what councillor Bowring talked about earlier. And what about the families who live in those homes right now? Would the Tories rather these families were turfed out onto the streets? We will never apologise for investing in our borough and its people. It's what we are here to do. Scrutiny and oversight. Reports on Lampton are scrutinised, they tell you otherwise, but they are scrutinised by the shareholder committee, the scrutiny committee, the audit and governance committee and borough council. So there is plenty of scrutiny on what happens already. We've just been debating the Treasury Management media report, which shows that our borrowing has reduced. We're in a better state than most other councils and that no prudential limits were breached. We're currently developing a medium-term plan to provide even greater oversight of the Lampton Group, give greater economies of scale and ensure even better fiscal discipline. Council finances are externally audited, not by armchair accountants over there, but by professionals who know what they are doing. And finally, as for the services delivered, Tories mention housing maintenance. Our housing maintenance service has been independently judged to be of a high standard, with residents recording 91 satisfaction rates with responsive repairs. And the reason we brought this amendment tonight is because the Tories don't actually appear to be proposing anything. Where's their plan? What would happen to hundreds of residents who have to find somewhere else to live under their plans? Would they rather privatise and outsource to profit-making companies like Carillion and Fusion? We know where that goes. And most importantly, who do they think they are kidding when they talk about financial security? I'll say it again, after 14 years of Tory failure, it should be clear now they don't have the answers, not for this country and not here in Hounslow, never, ever again. I move the amendment.
Thank you councillor Bruce. And can I invite councillor Sayar Raza to second the proposed amendment and speak if he wishes to?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I am pleased to second this Labour group motion. To the Tory motion, that smacks of real political desperation over there. At some point, presumably under the direction, I'm sure, from the Conservatives HQ, they sat down and decided to attack the council finances. Ah, shame, I'm sure. We should be used to it now, but to be fair, we've been looking at it for the last 14 years under government Conservatives rule. But rather than apologise for the harm that they caused by attacking us, we in this Labour government, in this Labour group, and in government as well, and in this council and everywhere else
I'm sorry councillor Raza, I'm going to have to stop you. So under rule 19, I do need to ask members of this party to stop interrupting, to stop making loud commentary. And I will do exactly the same to the other side and any other member that chooses to do so. But it continues and it's getting out of hand. I need to ask you to please act with civility and let the other side speak. And I will demand the same courtesy as offered to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But rather than apologise for the harm their government caused in attacking, we have weathered this storm for the last 14 years. We have prudent finances in this council. With their sort of austerity that they will never invest into this council, they will never talk about investing in people, they will never talk about investing in place. They really don't, they don't really care about the residents. The Tories have some nerve to talk about council finances when a cabinet member of finance at our nearest Tory council just resigned in a wake of the council itself applying for a government bailout. Unbelievable, unbelievable. And they're saying that we should trust them. This motion contains a number of fundamental misunderstandings. First, there is no scrutiny at Lampton. They keep saying there's no scrutiny at Lampton. This is totally and utterly wrong. Lampton are under constant scrutiny by shareholder committee, with reports, agendas, minutes all made publicly available. It is also under constant scrutiny by Oberlin scrutiny committee, of course, our chair. In fact, it often seems
Twenty seconds councillor Raza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We should be using the opportunity here, not just in scrutiny as well. We talk to our cabinet members. We are absolutely assertive to our cabinet members and officers when it comes to scrutiny. We did have a scrutiny in a day event as well. And we've already heard plans from Lampton be more efficient than
Thank you councillor Raza.
I move this motion, thank you. And it's not about Lamborghinis.
Thank you.
This is about residents of this
Thank you councillor Raza.
of this borough.
So now councillor Emsley, I need to ask you if you agree with the proposal to amend the motion?
I feel like it's almost a different motion, Madam Mayor, but no, I don't agree with it.
Thank you. So in that case, we will go to a debate on the proposed amendment to the motion. Okay, I'm going to start with councillor Thompson, please.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Talking on the amendment then, and we honestly do feel it should be thrown out because it takes our motion and frankly completely whitewashes it. We have a motion asking for transparency, independent scrutiny, the publication of the £100,000 report that no one's ever seen. Your amendment removes every single one of our actions and replaces them with a glossy PR brochure for Lampton Group PLC. Nothing to see here. That, this is not an amendment. Why is this, why this has not been ruled out as a negation of our motion?
Point of order, please, Madam Point of order, Madam Mayor. If councillor Thompson's saying that
Order number please councillor Strout-Turk.
I'm just about to tell you. If councillor Thompson is saying that chapter 13 of the constitution's been breached and this is actually not an effective amendment because it negates amendment, I think he needs to address that to the monitoring officer. These amendments were run past the monitoring officer and they were agreed. Because it sounds to me that councillor Thompson's accusing the monitoring officer of slipping up somewhere.
Councillor Strout-Turk, I will pass that on to them. You've raised a legitimate question, so I'm happy to raise it
I wasn't raising it to the monitoring officer. I was saying, what I don't understand, why it's not seen as a negation, I haven't questioned it. I think in a free country, in a democracy, I am allowed to think whatever the hell I want about what's in front of me. So I think that's a negation.
Point of order again. He's questioning it on the constitutional grounds to say it was whitewashing and negating the motion.
Councillor Strout-Turk, can I just ask you to stop? Can I ask the monitoring officer, please? Because I believe
I haven't even raised the issue formally, Madam Mayor.
But you have raised it now and it's quite
Frankly, if I said, I don't know why it's not daylight outside, I'm allowed to think that. I don't need someone to go and verify it's daylight. There's a thousand and one things that I believe, beliefs and ideas and interpretations of what's in front of me, and I'm allowed to say that. I think I have freedom of expression.
But negation is a specific
I'm not denying it. I even said later on, I respect the ruling, I say. But I then say, if this is not a negation, then councillor Bowring must have been involved because only a professional magician could make our entire motion disappear. That's my opinion. I've seen tonight an increasing
Madam Mayor, if I've been referenced, do I have a right to reply?
An increasing
I believe under the constitution, if I've been personally referenced, I have a right to reply.
Okay, I'm going to stop here and I'm going to take a five-minute break. Okay? I'm going to stop here and I'm going to take a five-minute break because the conduct of various members is overstepping a mark, I think. I am asking everybody to have a little bit of a reset. No, I'm not taking your question councillor Mashisho. I'm giving a ruling. I'm saying we're taking a five-minute, and I'm not picking at anybody in particular. I'm saying we're having a five-minute chill. If behaviour continues in this, this is a five-minute adjournment councillor McGregor. If it continues, then there'll be another five-minute adjournment and then there'll be another five-minute adjournment and then we'll be here ever so late. So could I please remind everybody what I said about civility? And that goes to everybody. We'll have a five-minute adjournment and we'll come back at 11 minutes past 10. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
Madam Mayor, if I could just chance my arm and raise a point of order, I think it would be a good point to move suspension of standing orders under 8.2 of the constitution. I fear we're going to run out of time fairly shortly.
Certainly councillor Strout-Turk, we can
We probably need a second round of vote on that, though.
Councillor Gill, would you like to second that? Can we have a vote on whether we extend standing orders? All those in favour? Any against? Noted. Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I just want to make a small note around section nineteen of the council procedure rules. So I do have the ability to stop proceedings if members are acting in a way that I don't think is conducive to the meeting. I take my role very seriously as mayor. And as mayor, I am impartial and I aim to give everybody the chance to speak in a respectful manner. We owe it to our residents, all of us, to allow that to take place. And so if that is not taking place, then I am going to take measures to try and get the meeting back on track, which is what I have done. There are rules, as you well know, under section nineteen to allow me to remove members if that is continual. So please, I am asking everybody, can we please act with civility? Absolutely, we have political differences on the floor and that is fine. That is what we are here to debate. But can we please do so in a civil manner? So I'm gonna hand back to councillor Thompson to continue and I'm going to give him some extra time. We will go back and give you three.
Right, okay.
You don't have to use them, councillor Thompson.
No, no, I won't, I won't. I've done all the good bits, anyway. Look, our motion is just trying to point out serious facts, financial facts that we've heard a lot about tonight. There are real governance problems. And what was being outlined by the chair of overview scrutiny, reassuring those those words are, we need more, we need more things to be in place. You know, you had to increase the shareholder committee. You had to move officers to focus particularly on Lampton. You had to work on the constitution. These are things that have had to be done. This motion also makes some sort of cheap point about avoiding outsourcing. We've heard it tonight that we would outsource anything under the sun. Yeah, we did in two thousand and seven, outsourced leisure services. And actually, that generated, brought in millions of pounds that led to every sports centre and library being refurbished. It went a bit pear-shaped after two thousand and ten, but I wasn't around then, so that wasn't my fault. That's to do again with, I don't care who's running the service. You know, we've got these people running our enforcement service, who, they're doing a really good job, aren't they? We've got folks, a liberator, we've outsourced service that area for Yonks. I don't care who runs it, I don't care who provides it. What I do care is that it is properly checked, that it's accountable, that it's run well. No private company board would be allowed to this much financial drift and self-pleasing. Yeah, you seem quite happy, like we said, there's nothing to see here. Let's just move on. There's a very clear choice tonight. Either we stand up for residents, and actually, just to mention that point, we've heard repeatedly tonight that we don't care about residents. We are residents. Our children goes to these schools, we live in this borough. We've lived, my children, their entire lives, me for thirty-odd years. Do not portray us in this sort of stereotypical lazy student politics as these heartless, uncaring Tories, a phrase we hardly ever use about ourselves, who are financially literate, blah de blah de blah. At my school today, if I'm allowed to say this without being sectioned for raising a thought, we were discussing AI and how the impact it's having on education and how we end up with homework that all looks the same because they've all typed the same question in. And we're hearing it tonight. All these speeches, you know, people aren't stupid. If you look on social media, we can't, we're not allowed to use it, but other people are, they're picking up that many of our thoughts have been carefully crafted by ChatGPT because the phrases, we're getting bored stiff of it. How much longer are we gonna hear about the fourteen years we don't care outsourced? The cliches, I know a message needs to be repeated. But sometimes, I think, especially people my age who are passionate as IT savvy as others, just need to be told that, you know, it is dead obvious to those in the know when we're not speaking from our heart, we're not using our own words, we're just cobbling together what the algorithms say. Let's be honest with people. Let's have real transparency, real discussion, free discussion in this chamber and support and reject the amendment and stick with the motion.
Thanks, councillor Thompson. Now I'm gonna go to councillor Bath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to actually thank councillor Thompson, sorry, councillor Bruce. It is getting late. I'd like to thank councillor Bruce for bringing this amendment here. And the reason being is that I know we all have different sort of opinions and different viewpoints, but I'm a great believer that we need to look at the facts and all of the information. And therefore, this amendment does that. So, for example, we have a shareholder committee meeting in a couple of days' time. And if you'd actually looked at the minutes, the agenda of that meeting and the reports, you would have seen some of the high-quality performance figures around the public services that are being delivered across the board. So, for example, a ninety-nine point ninety-seven percent rubbish collection rate, which our taxpayers benefit from. Leisure centre membership growing, swim school participation at an all-time high, high customer satisfaction and exceeding targets for repairs and voids management. Again, all of these benefit our taxpayers. Now, we've also, if you read the report, you'll see there's additional programme of works to bring complex void properties back into use. I know we've talked about voids in the past. Again, a huge piece of work. Lampton's investment position, sorry, has improved by one hundred and seventy thousand through improved management of rent reviews, again, bringing more money into, into the company. They're also carrying out a full review of the housing portfolio, and I think councillor Sampson will touch on that. Again, to look at rental income and reviews so that we manage to create more efficiency. The council is always undertaking a review to rationalise duplications between investment three sixty and the council's operational asset management. And again, Lampton Recycle meanwhile is now to forecast to make a profit of over a million pounds. So I know it's quite convenient for you not to mention any of this, but it is important work. And it's important in terms of the debate that everybody hears the full picture. It is making a clear difference. And it doesn't fit your narrative, suit your narrative, fair enough. But this is important, it's an important amendment and I support it because I quite frankly don't like looking at amendments, motions that are full of inaccuracies and not facts. So that's the way I see it.
Twenty seconds, councillor Bath.
Thank you. I'm taking facts out of the report, I'm not making these up. Thank you. And therefore, I propose, I'm happy to support the amendment.
Thank you, councillor Bath. Councillor Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. You may be surprised to hear that I support this mo-, the original motion. Because the proposer, it's surprising because the proposer mostly talked nonsense and shown his lack of financial or business knowledge. The seconder, who mentioned his scrutiny role related to my role, pretends to have forgotten taking me aside after the scrutiny meeting and saying, thank you so much for what a good response you gave. But he does remember that, but he didn't say it when he was earlier. I was the cabinet member with responsibility for Grampton from, for Lampton from two thousand and eighteen until May two thousand and twenty-three. I worked intensively. I attended all the Lampton company boards until that point and had an intimate understanding of the financial operation standard of all the Lampton companies. The delivery of waste and recycling by Lampton Recycling was already running well under professional management before providing excellent service at very competitive cost compared with the previous commercial provider when I started with it. So I can't claim too much credit for that. During the period whilst I led on Lampton, the housing repair service was moved in from the council to Lampton. I was unhappy about this at the time because I had extensive experience of outsourcing in the commercial world. And we had a rule not to outsource a problem. That's exactly what Hounslow did. They outsourced the problem with the Hounslow house maintenance. And that was exacerbated by doing it in two chunks. Later, Park's ma-, our Park's maintenance contractor, Carillion, went into, went bust. Lampton took responsibility of this activity at very short notice and immediately made a one point five million pound reduction in the cost and dramatically improved the service. The previously ineffective housing development and acquisition business, which we've talked about already, was losing money, but only had seven properties. Now, apparently, it has six hundred and thirty odd. When I left, it had something like six hundred. So the, all of these were, virtually all of these homes were given to people who are on the housing list and or living in temporary accommodation. They were all done, or the vast majority were done at LHA, which is what the government had been paid for them.
Twenty seconds, councillor Lambert.
Okay, so I'll go straight to the end because I'm, I'm a person who follows rules. We had, we had a quarterly report to cabinet every quarter, all the time I was there. And we debated it in cabinet. Since I was deposed, because I was deposed without notice and without reason from being involved in Lampton, it has never been discussed in cabinet.
Thank you, councillor Lambert.
And I think that, therefore, I think some more scrutiny is called for.
Thank you, councillor Lambert.
People rarely came, despite the fact they were supposed to.
Thank you, councillor Lambert. Councillor Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a cabinet member for housing, I want to put this debate into a language that everybody can understand. Hands up, who has a mortgage? Okay. Are any of you currently on the edge of bankruptcy? You are, councillor Mashisho? But are you on the border of bankruptcy or insolvency?
Councillor Sampson, I'm not sure we should ask.
Sorry. Okay. 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 Or, hold on, he's phoned me now because I weren't expecting that. Right, so nobody is on the verge of bankruptcy or insolvency. Okay. So you own a real tangible asset, okay? Bricks and mortar, a place that you call home, or you may rent, but either way, it's a home. Okay, so there's no difference between that and what we've done as a council. We've invested money to buy homes. Money goes in, homes come out. It's as simple as that. Homelessness spending causes bankruptcy, not house building. The Tories can spin it all they like, but those homes mean that we have some of the lowest numbers in temporary accommodation in London bucking the national trend. It's a known fact. It's having to fork out millions on homelessness that bankrupt councils, not spending on people's housing. If the Tories don't know that, I dread to think what would happen if they got in. Capital receipts. Why do we need to borrow money at all? We may ask. Why do we have a housing shortage in this country? The answer is sitting right across from us. It is the Tories who cut our funding by more than half. It is the Tories who decided that councils like ours shouldn't be able to keep the capital receipts from the right to buy. This Labour government has reversed this. And local authorities will now be able to keep capital receipts to invest in newer and better housing. That is the difference a Labour government makes. The Tories have tried to shake down local government at every turn. And it is ordinary working people who make, who pay the price. Only a Labour council will invest in the public services we need. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Councillor McGregor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The word investment seems to be quite commonly used, but it's not a very easy word to understand. When you buy a property, you buy whatever goes with it. And if you're buying a property at market rates and you then hand them over to a subsidised rental, i.e. a council rental, then you don't get a yield. And over time, that yield starts to fail the economy. If you don't get a yield, you don't grow the economy. It's as simple as that. Now, whether or not you like private housing or public housing or council housing, whatever you wish to call it, we need to recognise that there are people in this country who need to have low-cost housing. Absolutely. And that is the basis for making sure our society sticks together. We want social cohesion. Nothing else counts. We must have that social benefit. So when it comes to council housing, we want to have the best of the best. Now, some of you are old enough to remember the Parker Morris standards, which were adopted in the nineteen fifty's and sixty's. Parker Morris was the deputy secretary of state for the housing ministry, which was under Morris, under Harold Macmillan. They built large numbers of houses to an extraordinarily high standard. You go to the new towns, you see houses that were built to a better standard than their wimpy neighbours. What then happened was an urge to build more and more houses at cheaper and cheaper costs. And that came in in nineteen sixty-four. It's a sadness that we lost our standards. It's a sadness that we have this as a political football. There's no need for it. But the economic reality is, if you don't get a yield from the rent, then you are effectively losing economic value every year, on every year, on every year. And that's one of the reasons why we no longer have the eight or nine percent growth rates that we had before councils dominated in the municipal housing market. Up until, relatively recently in people's memory, you would actually get houses that were built privately, which could be turned over for mortgage privately and give people a yield. And that's what the new towns did. So it was public housing to start with. It was then mortgaged, people paid, and the yield was there. And then they ended up, not with right to buy, they ended up with a house that they could call their own. That's what I want. I want to build people up. I don't want this huge area of social deprivation where people move. And I'm very pleased to hear about the homelessness issue. It's good news that we don't have homeless people. On the other hand, you go round the streets of Chiswick in the evening and you see lots of homeless people.
You've got twenty more seconds, although I'd forgotten to tell you. So you've got twenty more seconds.
It's okay. I keep good time myself, so I was about to finish. Thank you for that, Madam Mayor. The concept then is that this motion and these motions are not austere or negative or positive. It's just that we need to get a grip on how we handle both the housing market and our municipal building. But without a yield, we are driving the economy downwards.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. I've got five more speakers that put their hands up. I'm conscious of time. I'm gonna take those speakers, but I want to ensure that we remain very much on topic on the proposed amendment. Thank you. Next speaker, I have his cancer done.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So let us be clear here. The opposition councillors know that there is no crisis here. What we have is managed risks and strong decisive action to provide homes and services for local residents. They like to pretend there is a crisis because that is politically advantageous to them, but it is not the truth. Good homes and services don't come cheaply and borrowing is normal, responsible practice for councils across the country. And as we have heard earlier this evening, our borrowing is well managed. It is under control. Hounslow's Conservatives seem perennially disappointed that this council has not gone bankrupt. They want us to go bust. That is not putting residents first. If we had followed their advice in previous years, such as draining more of our reserves, maybe we would have gone bust by now. The reality is this, Hounslow is a well-managed, financially prudent council. We invest wisely, we deliver results and we protect our residents. And that's what- And that's what they hate. The Lampton Group is a key part of that success story, building affordable homes and maintaining high-quality services. This amendment ensures that we continue having that transparency and rigorous oversight that we have when it comes to Lampton Group and a commitment to delivering for our borough. So let's reject these politics of doom and gloom and stand up for a council that gets things done for Hounslow residents. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Councillor Todd.
Thanks very much. I'm going to follow the guidance of Lily Bath. Show some, throw some facts. No one's mentioned that Lampton had a thousand homes and it sold three hundred odd to HRA. Why couldn't that transfer continue? But can we just have very basic facts? It's never, ever made a profit. I read everyone in the shareholder reports. There's no detailed questioning. No one lifts the bonnet. The only, it's that last round of papers, the only, the only people who mention income, there's a mention of ten million pound in the scrutiny one day report. There's a mention of voids, no numbers. There's a need to review the rent. Every sort of day, there's a fresh problem comes out. So I'm not against the concept of having your own company. And no one's mentioned, actually, that seventy percent are social housing and thirty percent is private. Now, I think that private gives you some flu. So I think there's, all we really wanted was some professional advice. I want to see Lampton succeed. The recycling is a good example of where it can do. You've got a wonderful depot. But the two, these two companies here are not succeeding. And I hate to say, I've been to a, I've been to a shareholder meeting. It's, you know, the one I, just one, there were no, there was no questioning. Since 2022, the Audit Committee have been hounding this council to get, to get a grip of Lampton. In our last papers, there are three matters outstanding since 30th of June 24. Audit matters were undertaken, have been given by officers, and they've relayed on that undertaking. I'll just say briefly what they are. There's a lack of agreed contract on Lampton billing arrangements. There's a lack of transparency and clear evidence to support billing and works completed. Again, Lampton billing arrangement and inconsistencies and inaccuracies in the information provided by Lampton. Now, that's pretty chunky stuff. So if you're not going to take your coat off, if you're not going to have officers from the company come to these shareholder meetings and start ripping into it, so all the people at home see consistent loss, loss, loss. I'll briefly mention the one day scrutiny. Scrutiny have come back, they've, they've seen high maintenance costs, rent increases not being applied, rent increases not being applied, losses on delivery of housing maintenance. I see Collo now can't, you mentioned about housing, Sue Sampson, councillor Sampson, yeah. I was shocked to read that Collo don't have the capacity to do up the four hundred empty houses that have been empty for two years. So all I'm saying, I think that side was quite a balanced, evidenced and appropriate thing to look after good governance and effective oversight.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Strout.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. A couple of things. When I first saw this amendment, we started going through it, I was in a place where councillor Thompson was, I said, oh, gosh, you can't have an amendment like this because it's negating the amendment. Then I started looking at the actual motion, and I realised it was rubbish. So we're not negating it, we're correcting some enormous factual errors in the original motion. And they know they're factual errors because it comes about to councillor Bruce saying, it's just fear mongering, it's absolute fear mongering. And councils in London, and this has been said so many times tonight, but it does bear repeating, councils in London have a very stark choice. You can either do what we do, you can do what we do, which is invest in housing and give homes to people who need them, and we have produced six hundred and twenty-nine homes, or you don't build those homes and you pay a fortune in temporary accommodation. Every council in London and outside London which is going under, and it's no good just trying to Google it, it's a fact, are going under, they're sinking under the cost of temporary accommodation. And as councillor Sampson said, we have one of the lowest bills for temporary accommodation because we have chosen to give our residents a decent home. And remember this as well, if you're in temporary accommodation, it is not a home. It's where you're going to be for the next few weeks. We are giving people a front door that when they close it, and I'm stealing this from the late Steve Curran, when they close that front door, they're in their home and they're secure. And until you've got that front door to close, and until you've got security of saying, this is my home, you cannot get on with the rest of your life. And this is what they want to deprive people of, the ability to build a home, to build a future and prosper. And we've chosen to give people the ability to have that home and to have that front door. And on top of all that, we are good landlords. We have a ninety-one percent satisfaction rate in our responsiveness to repairs. I mean, I know all this got put in your pigeonholes, but there's, I know it's another flashy brochure probably, and you probably didn't read it, but it's got all the statistics you need on what's happening with housing. And it tells you in there that we've got a ninety-nine point three percent emergency repair completion time. I mean, guys, come on, smell the coffee, stop electioneering, we're still a few months off.
Twenty seconds, councillor Strout.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And actually, let's get behind this amendment, let's support Lampton, which is doing an absolutely incredible job considering the financial climate that we're still going through. And let's give the residents of this borough a home and a front door and security.
Thank you, councillor Strout.
And I'd just like to point out, that wasn't done by AI at all.
I'm going to go to councillor Mashisho, then councillor Mosley, then I'm going to go to councillor Emsley. I'm going to have to not take any more questions, councillor Stiggy, and then I'm going to go to councillor Emsley for summing up because I'm conscious of time. So councillor Mashisho, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can neither confirm nor deny that my speaking is going to be done by AI. I will let you figure it out. Councillor Strout brings a brochure, a very glossy one, by the way, about the numbers of the facts of how well they're doing repairs. But I look in my inbox of residents who are emailing me that their, their housing, their repairs are still in waiting. And I don't know if they filled in a satisfactory survey to add to your brochure there, but I can tell you now, and councillor Bidoff would attest, we have a number of casework about repairs in our inboxes. Now, Labour don't like criticism. But, you know, it's important to have a critical friend, Labour. That's what scrutiny is about. And that is what the proposal of councillor Emsley put forward, to have that accountability. And you rejected that offer. On this occasion, councillor Bruce, rather than defending and attacking us, I should give you credit, you didn't do that. Instead, you did something new. You shifted the goalposts. Councillor Emsley did say, you have only built one property in this municipal year. That is a fact. That is a fact, one, one. Now, now.
It's not a fact.
You've started, you've started one. Could I, please don't interrupt me. The second, the second part is to say, to go to councillor Lily Bath, I wasn't intending to speak on this one, but councillor Lily Bath said something that triggered me. And that was that homelessness was not looked at under the Conservative government. In fact, the facts are otherwise. Two point four billion pounds spent under the Conservative government to eradicate homelessness. In fact, your favourite newspaper, I actually read it myself, The Guardian, even put a headline out, let me, let me just read the headline, you shall allow me, Madam Mayor, coronavirus nearly ended homelessness in the UK. Why? Because so much money was spent on tackling homelessness. I remember being in his very chamber when councillor Lily Bath had that brief, and she mentioned the drive to end homelessness just at the end of Covid. So where did that money come from? It wasn't a Labour government, it was a Conservative one.
Twenty seconds, councillor Mashisho.
So to conclude, councillor Dunn says that we, that there is no crisis here. There is a crisis. Eleven of your members have resigned or walked out on you. You are in a crisis. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mashisho. Councillor Mosley.
Yeah, I mean, my speech wasn't AI written, which is evidenced by the fact that I won't stick to it because what, what I wanted to say tonight was about Lampton, what it's providing, and talk about some of the concerns that you've raised. But what I've heard tonight is maybe so disappointed in the level of debate in this chamber. Before I was a councillor, I spent a lot of time researching into the scale of the local authority finance crisis that has gripped local authorities across this country, Conservative, Labour, Liberal Democrat, and soon to be Reform too. And I sometimes wondered what those chambers would be debating about how to fix some of those challenges. And I perhaps naively thought that there would be trading in ideas about what they could do to deal with the financial challenges that were caused by the Conservative government cutting funding by sixty percent in real terms. Now, they can pretend that that issue didn't happen. I wouldn't want that to happen if I was a member of that party as well. Perhaps councillor Garywell will agree. But I have to tell you that I'm just so disappointed in their lack of ability to recognise the issues that their party caused and not engage constructively, at least locally, on what we can do to clean up the mess that their national party caused. We might not want to talk about it from their perspective, but it's so important, sixty percent cut in real term funding. We talked all night today about where debt comes from, as if it's some, there's some idea that we just have this desire to rack up the credit card with no earthly reason behind it. I can tell you in my report, which is available in all good recycling bins across the country, that debt across local authorities cumulatively went up, it doubled from 2010 roughly. So a hundred billion pounds to two hundred billion pounds. Why? Why did that happen? Why is it under the Conservative government? Did local authority debt spiral like this? It's because they cut the funding and local authorities were left with the bill. They had to think imaginatively about what they were going to invest in to generate enough income to deal with the shortfall that the Conservative government left them with. And what did those councils do? They created things like Lampton. They created ways in which they could invest in their community without the money that was there previously from, from government. I also heard today, which may be so disappointed, this idea that central banks are now under control of government. We know full well that that's not the case, they know full well that that's not the case. But if you want to play that kind of gutter politics and get away from the actual reality of it, the Labour Party has had five interest rate cuts over its time under the Conservative government, it went up sixteen times. We want to pretend that that's the way in which we're going to handle these things? It is just rubbish. And I just would have hoped that the Conservative Party opposite would have engaged constructively in this, rather than engaging in this ridiculous kind of policy. Thank you.
Can I now draw an end to that lengthy debate and hand back to councillor Emsley, please, to sum up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's a hospitable pass to sum up that lengthy debate. Couple of things I wanted to address from colleagues. The first one, councillor Sampson talks about mortgages, well, hands up who has a mortgage that's worth a hundred and ten percent of the value of their home? I suspect nobody because no real bank would give you that. Councillor Bath and councillor Strout talked about removing inaccuracies in this amendment. Well, do you dispute that Lampton has lost a cumulative fifteen million pounds? Do you dispute that Lampton has forecast a two point two million pound loss this year? Because if you don't, I think you should probably read the amendment before you speak on it via ChatGPT. We've also heard from former Labour councillors, former Labour cabinet members, who confirm the lack of scrutiny that is currently being undertaken in this council towards Lampton. It is a dereliction and a shirking of duty. And councillor Mosley is absolutely right to say we should be being constructive as a chamber and exchanging ideas, which is why I suspect he will be voting against this amendment. Because what this amendment does is it removes all references to the Lampton Group's massive financial losses. It buries heads in the sand rather than exchanging those ideas. It blocks proposals to give this council a democratic vote and debate on future loans to the Lampton Group. What it does is it removes the requirement for cabinet members to attend over half the shareholder committee meetings. It blocks the creation of an independent shareholder scrutiny committee. And the question all councillors should ask themselves before voting on this amendment this evening is, why? Why do they want to, do they not want to talk about Lampton's multi-million pound cumulative losses? Why are they so scared of giving this council a vote on future Lampton loans? Why block proposals for independent scrutiny of the group? Why do they believe cabinet members shouldn't be required to regularly attend shareholder committee meetings? With this amendment, councillor Bruce is asking for more of the same, more chaos, bigger losses, less transparency and zero democratic accountability. Now, if you can look your residents and businesses in the eye and tell them that you believe everything is currently fine, it's like that, that meme online of a dog sitting in a burning kitchen, everything is fine, there's no problem. If you can look your residents and businesses in the eye and say, we don't need to break out the fire extinguishers, we should ignore the massive Lampton losses, then this is the amendment, you should vote for it. But if you agree that this fire needs to be tackled, we need to do something differently, we need scrutiny, we need accountability, you should vote against this amendment and back the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Emsley. So now we're going to move to the vote on the proposed.
Can I move a recorded vote?
Yes. Yes, you can move a recorded vote. So can we now move to a recorded vote on the proposed amendment? Oh, sorry. Would somebody like to second that? Thank you. So can we now move to the recorded vote on the proposed amendment? So can I, who's taking the list? So I will hand over to the chief executive.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I shall read members' names out in alphabetical order. Please confirm whether you are for, against, or wish to abstain in relation to the amendment. Councillor Akshad Ahmed, for. Councillor Mohamed Shaqil Akram, for. Councillor Medea Assim, for. Councillor Harwell Atwill here, Harleen Atwill here, apologies. Councillor Lily Bath. Councillor Rashid Bhatti, for. Councillor Joanna Bidoff, against. Councillor Dan Bowring, for. Councillor Tom Bruce. Councillor Gazala Butt, for. Councillor Samia Chowdhury. Councillor Ansa Chowdhury, for. Councillor Banu Chopra, for. Councillor Amy Croft, for. Councillor Theo Dennison. Councillor Hera Dillon, for. Councillor Catherine Dunn. Councillor Jack Emsley, against. Councillor Adesh Farmerham, for. Councillor Ranjit Gill, for. Councillor Ashma Gerewell, for. Councillor Britam Gerewell, for. Councillor Shivraj Gerewell. Councillor Vikram Gerewell. Councillor Vishnu Garg. Councillor Alan Joseph, against. Councillor Farah Kamram. Councillor Afzal Kehani, against. Councillor Gemal Lal, for. Councillor Guy Lambert, against. Councillor Amrit Man. Councillor Gerald McGregor. Councillor Junu Mier, for. Councillor Hina Mia. Councillor Alan Mitchell, for. Councillor Max Mosley, for. Councillor Romashisu, against. Councillor Samina Nagra, for. Councillor Zaya Raza. Councillor Zaya Raza, for. Councillor Farhan Raynman, for. Councillor Danish Said. Councillor Sue Sampson. Councillor Marina Sharma, for. Councillor Aftab Sazdiki, for. Councillor Karen Smith, for. Councillor John Stroud Turp, for. Councillor Kuldeep Tak, for. Councillor Asia Tariq, for. Councillor Peter Thompson. Councillor John Todd. Councillor Mohamed Amir. Councillor Emma Yates. The motion has been, the amendment has been carried.
Thank you. So we now move to the substantive item.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Could I, could I move, this is chapter eleven, sub paragraph L, that the question now be put on the main question? I think we debated this to death and it will serve no further purpose to have further debate on the amended motion.
One second. Okay. I think under our rules, it would be permitted to ask the other members of the opposition, well, the leader of the opposition and other members, if they're happy to continue with no debate, given the extent of the debate we've had on this. And then to ask councillor Emsley if he is happy to sum up, even though there hasn't been a substantive debate, on the basis that there has been a substantive debate in the proposed amendment section.
You did very well there, Madam Mayor.
Very late.
That is totally fine. I will, I will sum up if we're happy that the debate's finished.
Okay. I see no objections to that. So in that case, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Me again. You get bored of my voice. I think this Labour group is in a little bit of a crisis. As councillor Mashiso said, eleven Labour councillors have resigned since the last election, six of them in just the last few weeks. They've had scandal after scandal after scandal. And now with this amended motion.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, a point of order again. This is not, this is not.
Point of order under what section councillor Stroud?
The point of order is under section eleven, sorry, not eleven L, it's under nine, 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 nine point one. Sorry, nine, nine point two, that it's got to be substantive. Sorry, I've got the wrong one. I beg you, I beg you. Sorry, twelve point four, twelve point four. Speeches must be directed to the question under discussion. This is, this is not the question under discussion. The question under discussion is. Wait, wait a minute. You can only deal with one at a time. Read the rules. We're dealing with the first point of order. The first point of order is this is not addressing the question under discussion, under twelve point four. He's having a general rant and ramble about the Labour Party, which is not the question under discussion.
Okay, but we've, I have allowed some of that in debate across the floor, but I would ask you now to turn to.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, after that brief, but regular intervention from our favourite member of the administration. What I was going to say is they've had scandal after scandal and now with this amended motion, they seriously want us to trust them with their borough's finances without any additional scrutiny. On this administration's watch, the Lampton Group has made cumulative losses of fifteen million pounds. They've gambled nearly a quarter of a billion pounds of taxpayers' money. Cabinet members failed to turn up to shareholder committee meetings. This council is frozen out from having a say on how much money we pour into this group of companies. And all of this, this motion, this continuation of more of the same is against the backdrop of a budget gap set to rise to over ninety million pounds in the next two years. It's happened under their watch and now they are blocking any attempt to steady their ship. It's just worth considering who, with this motion now amended, we're voting to allow to continue mismanaging our borough's finances. This is the party who park their Lamborghinis in disabled bays and think they don't have to pay a fine. The party whose councillors have been disqualified for failing to turn up to these meetings. The party which hands out fifty thousand pounds in allowances for non-jobs and they now want us to vote.
You are wandering far off track.
They now want us, you're right, Madam Mayor, they now want us to vote for an amended motion which praises their financial stewardship and blocks any attempt at scrutiny against those people who we have just referenced. Residents and businesses will be rightly disgusted and this side of the chamber will be voting against.
Twenty seconds councillor. So now we move to a vote on the amended motion. Can I ask all those in favour to raise their hand? Can I ask any, all those against to raise their hand? And any abstentions? Then the motion is carried as amended. Thank you. Next agenda item is the second motion on which we can be found on agenda item thirteen. Members will observe for the supplementary agenda that an amendment to this motion has been proposed. May I also correct a small error that has appeared in the latter document where councillor Raza and councillor Bidolf's names were linked in error? And for that, Thomas is very sorry. I know that members, I know that members have, I know that members have worked together on scrutiny matters for many years, but on this occasion, the name Raza should be deleted as it's just councillor Bidolf who will be seconding the proposal, proposed amendment. I will now invite councillor Emma Yates to propose the motion. Councillor Yates, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm proud to be proposing this motion tonight because I believe the first duty of a Labour council should be to provide good quality homes for residents who need them. That is why I'm so glad to see that one of the borough's flagship social housing projects is taking shape in my ward. Already this year, we have seen two hundred and ninety seven new homes delivered across the borough. But council tenants don't just deserve a roof over their head. They should have a place that feels like home. That is why this Labour council offers secure lifetime tenancies so that local families are given the stability they need to put down roots and thrive. It's why we've invested over three hundred million into improving our homes and estates. This motion resolved to welcome the recent C two judgment from the independent regulator for social housing and seeks support from full council for the recommendations adopted as part of the final housing strategy. On housing maintenance, we were judged to be providing an effective, efficient and timely repair service with a ninety one percent satisfaction rate on responsive repairs. Our targeted approach to turning around empty properties even faster is beginning to bear fruit. The council has been judged to be meeting its obligations in relation to landlord health and safety. Around eighty two percent complaints were handled on time despite stricter timeframes being brought in earlier this year. From Pinewood Estate in Hanworth Park to Bolton Road in Chiswick, our estate improvement officers have been hard at work. We should never be complacent. This judgment is an opportunity to take stock, to celebrate what we are getting right and to improve our services for the future. We've heard a lot tonight about long term versus short term thinking. Whether that's our discussion of the Vision twenty fifty strategy or the Tories implying that we shouldn't have bothered building any social housing in our borough. That's what the debate boils down to. Housing maintenance, health and safety compliance, complaint handling and estate improvements are all the things that the council deals with in the day, in the day today, sorry. But this motion asks us all to look at the future. It proposes to support the recommendations made in the regulator's report and to fully support the borough's final housing strategy. This strategy sets out how we will address those recommendations and deliver the five priorities over the next five years. Tackling homelessness and rough sleeping, providing safe and decent council housing, raising standards in the private rented sector, ensuring residents live healthy, independent lives and building more genuinely affordable homes. Let's take this moment to stand up for our tenants and to look at how we can go on providing them with somewhere that's more than a place to live, but a face, a place to feel proud of. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Yates. I'd like to invite councillor Sampson to second the motion and speak if she wishes. Councillor Sampson, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad to second the motion, but I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Now you will see that there is a proposed amendment which members can find in the supplementary agenda and I invite councillor Peter Thompson to introduce it. You have five minutes.
Thank you. We were accused earlier of, you know, because we're in opposition, we, it's all doom and gloom in Hounslow. And I suppose by the same token, we're accusing you with this motion of being rather Pollyanna and just focusing on the positive. And that's what our motion is doing. You look at it very carefully. Just talking about the motion, not the nonsense that we don't want to build social housing and we're wicked and all the rest of it, is there has to be balance. So Hounslow have got C two. Now, it's very clever, the spin that was put on that. But it says it's the second highest grade. And I suppose it is because it's C one, C two, C three and C four. But if you actually read what C two says from the government, not chat. C two means our judgment is there are some weaknesses in the landlord delivering outcomes of customer standards and improvement is needed. So it's not really, you know, I suppose it is the second highest, but actually it's not, you know, saying it's good. It just says there are weaknesses, some. And then it continues, and I'm literally quoting from the government here, right? It says, we expect them to develop a detailed plan. And councillor Yates, you mentioned that. So we just need to be very clear about what we're doing, okay? There are weaknesses that could harm residents and we just have to be honest. And that's what our motion tries to do. There are positives. We were accused earlier of not reading the report and only focusing on the good stuff, right? There are positives in here and I'm going to say them out loud, okay? It does recognise an improvement in repairs. We all have casework that sometimes shows that's not the case, but figures don't lie, do they? The antisocial behaviour work is solid. Complaints are improving, admittedly from a very low base, but there is improvement there. But that's where your motion stops. It doesn't really make clear that there's a lot of other things that we've got to sort out. So we are overdue with our fire safety actions, which is indefensible in light of Grenfell. We're overdue with our water and electrical remedial work. There are gaps in safety and quality of our housing stock. You wouldn't know that, would you, from the motion that is in front of you? But I'm just going to the report that we are meant to be saying is a gold star and we are marvellous. It makes clear the report, and yeah, this is the downside, but I've mentioned the good stuff, that tenants are not being given information they need. These are serious issues. So you can't just gloss over that with this sort of, you know, PR job for the housing department. It doesn't ring true. We lose credibility when, yet again, like with Lampton, nothing to see here, with housing, nothing to see here. But there is some stuff and we have to sort it out. Again, it's wonderful that we pledged thirty million pounds, but we'd actually be quite interested to know where that money is coming from and where it's going to be spent. So that's also part of our motion. So we'd like you to, you know, take this on board. Don't treat this as some sort of, you know, don't treat the regulator as a glorified PR consultant. They are a regulator. This, this report from them deserves honesty. Residents deserve accountability. They, I think, deserve better than to have a motion table tonight that treats C two as a triumph, I suppose. Well, yeah, it's not C three, it's not C four. Thank goodness for that. But there are areas that we need to improve. So praise the good stuff, praise the great people we have. Recognise it's not perfect, except you mentioned it councillor Yates. There are areas we are progressing and we're moving and there's an action plan. I know that. But we wouldn't need an action plan with all those targets if it was all going swimmingly. And your motion, read it, read it through one more time, does not give the impression that there are areas that we need to sort out. That is me trying to be balanced and it's us actually, for once, maybe you might think, trying to be helpful and constructive.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Biggaldorf, can I invite you to second the motion please, the amendment, proposed amendment?
Thank you, Madam Member, Madam Mayor. I would like to second the amendment. Councillor Thompson has outlined our position with great clarity. We need honesty, not spin. I'd like to look specifically at repairs glossed over in Labour's motion. The real life picture is far from glossy. At one council block where problems with a staircase were left to worsen, the recent repairs have been so shabbily done that water is seeping through brickwork and collecting on the landing. And this is a block where water floods the walkways because the drainage routes are blocked. In winter, this winter, this water will freeze into dangerous trip hazards outside residents' front doors. The walkways have been problems for years. At another block, residents have been waiting for over three years for a lock on a gate, presumably because the existing gate can't be locked, so a new gate is needed. The cost of a new gate and lock is a tiny part of the vanity projects at which this council has thrown money, but would bring peace of mind and stop drug dealing and other antisocial behaviour here. The main motion speaks of security. It isn't being implemented at this block. In another property, a converted house, lived in by tenants and leaseholders, work was first requested in December twenty twenty three and still has not been completed with what appears to be a twenty two month gap between the problems being raised and action being agreed. At another converted house, residents are enduring effluent flowing out of open drains onto communal outdoor areas. Emails go back and forth. The problem persists. This is one ward, as reported to me. Councillor Mashiso has other cases. Is there any councillor who doesn't have casework telling us this very different story from the picture painted by this council? Or are all the nine percent dissatisfied residents in Chiswick-Gonnersbury Ward? The problem is lack of funding, tiny budgets given to housing teams for repairs. I've lost count of the number of times my response to pleas for help has been, no one should have to live like this. This has nothing to do with officers and I too praise, it was mentioned earlier, Modesta and Oksana Stratton, who we know best, who have made huge and important changes. It has everything to do with political decisions on funding. Realistic funding for repairs is essential. Politically, this council does not understand how to prioritise. It should mean putting residents first instead of throwing residents and taxpayers' money at ideological vanity projects. The main motion's intention, that the council should provide tenants with a place that feels like home, is of course what we should all aim for. The reality, as experienced by many tenants, is far from that.
Twenty seconds councillor Bidolf.
Thank you. Self praise is a mark of Labour administrations. They pat each other on the back for PR puffery while problems persist and is no more evident than in this self congratulatory motion. Our amendment brings real life, the lives of our residents to this debate. I urge you to support it and to put tenants, not ideology, first.
Thank you councillor Bidolf. Well done for making that exactly three minutes. I now need to ask councillor Yates if she agrees with the proposal to amend the motion.
No.
Thank you. So I now invite people to debate the motion. Sorry, the proposed amendment. Sorry. Can I start with councillor Shum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to speak against this Tory motion which shows just how easy it is to be in opposition. The very first line of their amendment is to remove the reference to how so council receiving the second highest grade. They even suggest that we shouldn't welcome this positive judgement, instead focusing entirely on the negative. That is an insult to the hard work and achievement of everyone who has worked towards this positive C two grade. The Tories can criticise all they like, but this independent judgement speaks for itself. Look, there's always more work to be done. That is why we're resolving to welcome the recommendations in the report. The Tories want us to remove the line about the council being committed to providing more feedback about the impact of tenant scrutiny and other tenant engagement, such as the final housing strategy consultation through the meetings of residents' voice. Why? Because it shows that we are already acting on the recommendations while all they're interested in is picking holes. The report makes some really valuable recommendations, including that we need to do a better job at highlighting the role of tenant scrutiny. Since then, we've. do a better job at highlighting the role of tenant scrutiny. Since then, we have carried out a final housing strategy report whereby tenants and residents across the borough were able to contribute, shaping the future of housing in this borough. This is a listening council. Our hard work has been acknowledged, and we continue to drive up standards for our residents. They may not like it, but those are the facts. This Tory amendment fails to accept. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shum. Councillor McGregor.
Madam Mayor, I think this is a balloon that needs to be punctured. I'm dealing, as many of you are, dealing with issues with Hounslow Housing's repair service. I have several people living in housing that is absolutely substandard. Oh, well, in that case. So when we look at what's going on, when we look at what's going on in Hounslow's repair service, it's not all good news. The people they talk to are the ones who actually had a successful repair. They don't seem to talk to people who are still waiting. There's a particular programme here. There's damage done to a leaseholder by the tenant upstairs, and he's told to go and apply for his insurance. That's not appropriate. We all know who did it. And it was made worse by Hounslow repairing the property upstairs and actually providing another cascade into the floor below. It's not clever. This is a disabled OAP who needs to be looked after. Another good instance is where we have a builder, a decorator from Hounslow Homes Building Service, Lampton, who walked off the job because he thought he'd discovered asbestos. There are two children under the age of four in that household. There's a man severely ill with Parkinson's disease. There's a woman, the wife, the mother, struggling to try and keep the whole thing on the road. And yet, there's this worry that we've got asbestos in the petitioning, because the house was originally a family house, was then divided by the council all the way back in the 1950s, when asbestos was not recognised as a problem. So the decorator washed off and talked to his supervisor. The supervisor said, leave the job. There's a hole in the wall, he said. Well, stick sticks and plasters over it and then come out. So that was what happened. And then some time later, a gentleman turned up, who did not appear to have any professional qualifications about asbestos, and then declared, no, there's no problem. He didn't even look into the petition. He didn't even look at the debris on the floor. That's not clever. And I've got a family who may, may, question mark, may be subject to a problem with asbestos fibres. And if you have two young children breathing that stuff in, they will die of lung cancer.
Twenty seconds, councillor McGregor.
They will die of lung cancer in the really immediate future. We're talking four to five years, given the fact their lungs aren't developed. Madam Mayor, I think I stand with the motion. We don't need this sort of stuff.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Councillor Butt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to say a few words in support of this excellent housing report and the recent decision by the regulator for social housing, which gave Hounslow the second highest rating, AC2. This shows the council is doing a great job as a landlord. We are meeting our duties for health and safety, providing a repair service that is quick and reliable. And we are working well with other organisations to deal with antisocial behaviour and hate incidents. The report also says, we treat tenants and those applying for housing with fairness and respect. Our complaint system is fair and easy to use, and we are working hard to keep tenants informed about how we are dealing, whether online newsletters, through social media, or at our community hubs. This council is also investing over £300 million to improve council homes and estates. We are serious about making things better. We keep working to make sure our tenants feel safe and secure in their home. As a council tenant, I can speak first hand of the improvement teams are seeing. I fully support this report and the direction we are heading in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Butt. Councillor Mashiso.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's clear from just listening to the debate that we are supposed to have this listening council, but a council that doesn't want to actually listen to criticism. So they're happy to listen to an award they receive, but not happy to listen to when there's constructive opposition. Self-praise is one thing, and I'm all for self-praise. And there is a time and a place for that. And councillor Bruce knows I love a bit of self-praise. However, self-criticism helps you grow. It helps you develop. And I'm going to take this from a person that I met quite recently and spoke to for some time. He's actually the leader of the Labour group in Hammersmith. His name escapes me, but I'm sure you will know.
Steve Cowan.
Steve Cowan, thank you. I know, I don't think he did. But I speak highly of him, because he said something to me that was very interesting, and I think would be helpful to all of us here in the chamber. And that is that casework alone does not tell you a picture of how the borough is performing. And I couldn't agree with him more. But what he did say was, if there is a pattern of repeated incidents or repeated reports in the same area and the same department, then there is a problem, and it needs to be solved. What this amendment points out is that there is a problem, because housing is the number one complained about issue in this borough. And I give credit to the cabinet member for housing, who has done marvellous work trying to put down some of the fires. But there are still questions to be asked. Empty housing, for example. Repairs as casework, as councillor Biggaldorf has already mentioned. So this whole idea of there's nothing to see here, when you fail to admit fault, then you allow things to breed as they are. And as they are, it's just not good enough. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mashiso. Councillor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This Tory amendment is an amendment for the sake of an amendment. And this is exactly the kind of petty opposition that has led me to leave the Tory party. They're always so keen on scrutiny and oversight, but never come up with any ideas. Just complain, complain, and that's all. This motion sets out exactly how the administration plans to address the recommendations in this report. But the Tories just don't want to hear it. They call for an itemised report outlining how the investment in council home and estate improvements is being delivered. They can see for themselves by reading the council's asset management strategy reports. But do they? I would like to have seen this level of concern for resident housing when we are discussing the Lampton motion earlier. Once again, we have a Tory amendment that seems to be going through the motions, providing opposition for the sake of opposition, but with no answers for how to improve housing in this borough. For this reason, I urge you all to reject it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gill. Finally, councillor Stroud Turp.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Do you remember we started off a while ago that they can't bear to see anything good? And all you need to know about this amendment is the first thing they delete is the second highest category. Now, councillor Thompson's a teacher. We know this. I presume that when one of his students gets an A, he says, could have been an A star, couldn't it? Yeah, the second highest grade is pretty good. We manage 13,500 homes, and we have 3,000 leaseholders. That's an enormous portfolio. And for once, I do agree with councillor Mashiso. He says casework is not everything. And he's right. 91%, this report says, of our repairs are done in orderly and timely fashion. Yes, we've all got bits of casework, but the trouble is with casework, as we all know, that it's usually not as it sometimes appear. And yes, there are some poor cases. And yes, we do get them right. But the other thing the Tories didn't do, they didn't actually bother to really read our motion. Because had they read the motion, this is not self-praise. We actually say, Hounslow's pudding's money's where his mouth is, investing in £300 million improving the quality of council homes. The council, whilst we welcome the positive judgement, continue acting on the recommendations in it. Yes, we recognise it's not perfect. We would have liked C1, but from this report, we now see what we need to do to get better. And we are listening. This is a very, very welcome report. Rather than the gobbledegook stuff that we hear from here, that they make up, and it's all sort of, I've got a resident who told me this, and a bloke I met in a pub, apparently. This is an independent, properly done report, which we need to celebrate. And they will never celebrate it, because they cannot bear to celebrate any success in this council. And do you know what? That reflects back to the residents. And it's this doom and gloom again. It's rubbish, it's rubbish, it's rubbish, everything's rubbish. And the truth is, it's not rubbish, is it? We've got a well-managed council. Our finances have been well-studded. And we've got a great housing stock, which we're looking after. And we've had a great mark from an independent, independent, not an in-house scrutiny, an independent review of our housing, says we're doing a great job. And they still bloody moan about it. I'm sorry, I swore there. But, you know, there you are. That's where it is. This amendment needs to be rejected. Let's get the motion back on the table as it originally does. And let's celebrate a bit of success, recognising we do need to do more, and we will do more.
Thank you, councillor Stroud Turp.
Once again, there was no AI involved in that. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, councillor Stroud Turp. Can I ask everyone, please, to keep silent when other people are speaking? Because else we'll have to have another adjournment. And I don't want that any more than anybody else does. So can I now pass over to councillor Yates to sum up, please?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the amendment proposed by the Tories just goes to show the pettiness of perpetual opposition. Although I acknowledge the praise of the officers from the opposition, by removing reference to the council receiving the second highest grade, they will be undermining the hard work of this administration and of every officer who has worked hard to achieve this. Given that our motion already sets out how we will work to improve the service provided, the Tory motion is completely unnecessary. That is why I urge you all to reject it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Yates. Can we then move to the vote on the proposed amendment? So firstly, for all members who are in favour of the proposed amendment, all those against, any abstentions. Therefore, the proposed amendment is not carried.
Madam Mayor, if I could chance my arm again on a point of order? As with the last motion, I think we've possibly beaten this one to death. And could I propose that the question now be put on the original motion unamended?
Thank you, councillor Emsley. In that case, councillor Yates, you are welcome to sum up if you wish. But equally, if you don't wish to sum up, you don't need to. Thank you. In that case, if everybody's happy, we will go to the vote on the unamended motion. All those in favour, please raise your hand. All those against, and any abstentions. Thank you. Then that motion is carried. That takes us to the next item on the agenda. Stay with me. We're nearly there. Next item on the agenda, item 14, which is the last motion on the agenda. I have been advised that this motion will now be proposed by councillor Germain Lau and seconded by councillor John Stroud Turp. Therefore, I'd like to invite councillor Lau to propose it. You have five minutes.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am proud to be proposing this motion tonight, which calls for six simple changes that could shift the balance of power in favour of local people and mitigate the impact of gambling harms on communities here in Hounslow. There's nothing wrong with placing the odd bet or having a bit of fun on the weekends. This motion isn't an attack on gambling. It's an attempt to address gambling harms. These harms are all too real. Public Health England has estimated that the annual cost to society from gambling addiction or associated crime and deprivation is over £1 billion each year. Gambling premises tend to cluster in areas with the highest deprivation, extracting big profits from our most vulnerable communities. In recent years, we've seen a big rise in adult gaming centres across the country. These contain many of the most harmful machines, some even have 24-hour opening times. So I guess, what can we do about this? Well, at the moment, very little. The 2005 Gambling Act sets out how, while the industry regulated by the Gambling Commission, it is local authorities who are responsible for licensing premises. The law currently enshrines an aim-to-permit approach that leaves local authorities with little power to change the granting of licensing applications. We can issue a statement of licensing principles, insist on certain conditions like CCTV, separation of betting and gaming areas, and require premises to maintain a risk assessment. However, we have little power to block unwanted gambling premises or make a cumulative impact assessment. Our motion tonight calls for a set of practical, sensible reforms. It calls for a six-point plan to shift the balance of power back in the favour of local communities. We're calling for the power to carry out cumulative impact assessments on gambling premises. We want directors of public health to be included in the gambling licensing process. We want to be able to review the current licence classifications to stop adult gaming centres from operating under bingo licences. We're also calling for an increase of the cap on annual licence fees to over £2,000. This will be the first increase since 2007. We want clarity on the balance of responsibilities between local authorities and the Gambling Commission. And finally, Madam Mayor, we want the government to review and ultimately remove the aim-to-permit rule from the Gambling Act. Madam Mayor, this is not a party political issue. Gambling addiction does not affect people based on how they vote. It affects them because they are vulnerable, because they are targeted, and because the law as it stands does not protect them. By joining together in support of these demands, we will be joining a growing coalition of councils demanding reform. This motion is about standing up for our residents, protecting our high streets, and ensuring councils have the powers needed to act in the public interest. Our communities deserve better, and the law must change. So I ask all councils, of course, all parties, to join me in supporting this motion and sending a clear message. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lau. Councillor Stroud Turp, can I invite you to second the motion? You have three minutes.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I will second the motion. Councillor Lau gave a very, very clear explanation of why we think this is important. I look to my opposite now. I'm led to believe that you will not be opposing this motion. You'd like to speak on it. Okay. In that case, I'll just say a few words. I won't reserve my right, but obviously councillor Lau will have the ability to sum up. Adult gaming centres or gambling centres are becoming a real curse on our high streets. And the issue is that they're not really wanted, and that's the problem. A recent survey found that only 15% of people, this is across the UK, actually thought they were a good thing. And almost 75% of people did not want them on their high streets. But worse than that, what we also know about them, that the companies that run them deliberately target areas of deprivation and poverty. And 53% in London of adult gaming centres are in the 20% of the most deprived areas. That is not a coincidence. That is deliberately targeting the people who they can lure into gambling. There's also a very high percentage, they are so cynical, some of these companies, they open their gambling centres almost within sight of centres which are offering gambling addiction help. And once again, this is not helpful. And some of the companies say, oh, but we sort of keep the high streets alive. Because if you've got a choice, you can have an adult gaming centre or an empty shop. I mean, you could apply that argument to lots of things. And in many cases, I know it's not what we really want, but I would rather have some empty shops rather than some rather disreputable businesses who are making some of our most vulnerable residents poorer and luring them into addiction. You've only got to stand in Bell Square, and from there, you can see four betting shops, four gaming centres, within 25, 50 metres of each other. four gaming centres within twenty-five, fifty metres of each other, and they're always full of people pumping coin after coin after coin into the slots. They're not there betting on horses most of the time, they're just putting money into slots, and those slots are generally not rigged, surprisingly, in their favour. It's a way, it is a poverty tax almost. And what councillor Lau is proposing is a way for the council to try to do something about that, and I will commend that motion to the council.
Thank you, councillor Stroud Turp. I now open the floor for debate. Councillor Thompson.
We are in a mess, and it all goes back, doesn't it, to the two thousand and five Gambling Act, and at least I can say tonight that was nothing to do with us. We will support this motion, but let's be honest about what it actually really achieves. Betting shops and the slot machine places on the high street are a problem, but we all know in this chamber that the real problem these days is online. It's on your phone, it's on your app, it's on all those various platforms, and we have absolutely no power over any of that. There are too many around down there, but nationally, there are less than there used to be, because this is betting shops, because of the move online, okay? So that is the fastest-growing area. So I think, yeah, we support this, because clustering is a problem. We need to have, councillor Lau's right, we need to have more problem, powers to fix that problem. Who wants all those things on the high road with all the other shops, frankly, that sometimes we could do without? But let's not pretend this motion will fix the real-world problems. We're only addressing probably twenty to thirty percent of the issue, and the other seventy to eighty percent is that online stuff, which is accessible literally by pressing your phone a couple of times. So we have to recognise that real power on this issue lies in Westminster, and there we hear mixed messages. It says in the report that Dawn Butler is pushing for stronger sort of regulation nationwide, and personally, I'm behind her, but I'm also conscious there's people in the Labour Party like Richard Baker, Scottish MP, who actually makes the point that the gambling industry, it's not my cup of tea in the slightest, but that industry actually generates millions, and a lot of people do work in that area, especially linking it to various sports and so on. So there is a bigger picture. So yes, we support it. Yes, we want the council to have more powers, but we have to recognise that this is very well-intentioned but limited. There is a lot more that national government needs to do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Choudry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to speak in favour of this motion, even though it's almost twenty to twelve, and yes, ChatGPT taught me to say that. The reason I support this motion is because it calls on our local communities to have the greatest say over the future of their high streets, and it's something I'm very passionate about, I'm very passionate about local people having the right to say and speak up. As we said, we are a listening council. The government recently announced a grant of one point five million to be spent on improving our local high streets. Part of their Pride in Place initiative, the money will be spent with input from local people about how we can make a better local area and make a difference. Here in Hounslow, we heard from our deputy leader about the bid, so the Business Improvement District that we have put in place, and it's an initiative that has been backed by the council. It's clear we've got a government, yes, a Labour government, and a local council dedicated to improving the experiences of our local high streets. If you, however, go outside and you walk towards the bus station, you will see that there's five adult gaming centres, four bookies, and that's got nothing to do with demand. As councillor John Stroud Turp mentioned, seventy-three percent of people prefer not to have gambling premises on their ideal high street. In the case of the adult gambling centres, more than half of these are located within our most deprived communities. They're actively styled, digital advertising screens, which my preschooler has been drawn to, and often asked to go in, and I tell them that actually you need to be over eighteen to go in there. Potentially, even that's breaching licensing principles. But they try and sell themselves as social, good, promising, free tea and coffee, when really we know they prey on the most lonely and vulnerable in our society. When one establishment opened, they had their doors wide open with attractive balloons, trying to attract everyone to come and see, oh, what's this new thing here? We see children's sports t-shirts, they don't display gambling adverts, and our high streets, they're plagued by them. Our statement of licensing principles identifies areas with higher risk, like places near schools, addiction treatment centres, or areas with high rates of crime and ASB. But the law is currently weighted in favour of the gambling industry, as we've seen by the lobbying to oppose the proposals in this budget. Even the annual licensing fees haven't increased since two thousand and seven, when the law was implemented. Well, for context, go back to two thousand and seven, a Mars bar cost thirty p, and was probably twice the size.
Twenty seconds, councillor Choudry.
Who? And the Tories were considered a serious political party, and who'd have bet against that? Some of the members who are now Conservatives were staunch Labour people back then as well. And again, who would have bet against that? For too long, the system has been weighted against local communities.
Thank you, councillor Choudry.
And this motion calls on change. So let's support this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Mashisho.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because the House always wins, gambling harms and deeply disrupts people's lives. Families suffer, individuals suffer, men, young men especially, suffer. When we look at the bookies across the borough and all of those slot machines, it's worth us reminding, it's worth reminding us that it is often those who are least well-off who frequent these premises. So I welcome councillor Lau's proposal here. This motion rightly highlights the need for local leadership, and I know councillor Thompson said that it's, you know, it goes online and therefore, but there is local leadership needed, and public health involvement is also required. The reforms of this are outdated, the aim-to-permit principle, for example, which goes directly against what our licensing policies ought to be, that needs to be removed, and I'm glad that that was highlighted in this in this in this motion. But we are, Madam Mayor, holding this motion at a time where the former chair of the Licensing Committee has resigned. That speaks volumes because it sends mixed messages. Just look at the journey of this motion. It has sparked massive online thirst. The interest has now been captured by national press.
Can I ask what relevance this is to the motion?
It's the licensing.
But what?
It's mixed messages about our licensing position in this borough.
I'm not sure I can see that.
Okay. Well, I'll try to explain a bit further, hopefully you can understand it. So I have no personal beef with the former chair of of.
Councillor Mashisho, you need to explain to me now how that relates to this motion?
The head, the chair of licensing, yes, the chair of licensing who's resigned, whose motion.
The former chair of licensing.
The former chair, whose motion was to his name in this in this article.
So he is not the person. Councillor, he is not the person who's proposing this motion, and it is perfectly within the rules.
I'm allowed to think, am I not?
You're perfectly allowed to think, councillor Mashisho, but I'm explaining to you that the person who has put this motion, who is allowed to put this motion, is not the former chair of the Licensing Panel.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like just to say, I have no personal beef with councillor Rahman on this. I'm sure his credibility will be sorted.
Again, councillor Mashisho, I've asked you to either tell me how it relates to this motion or stop.
I've just been, I just went past that. I'm not, I'm not saying any more about councillor Rahman. I said I have no beef with him. Is that clear?
Well, you are. Carry on talking about the motion by all means.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a good, we, who thought that it was a good idea to bring this motion forward? Well, we all thought it was a good idea to bring this motion forward. I beg your pardon, you throw me off now, but we are, as a, as a, as a, as a group, as a house, as Hounslow Council, we are all complicit if we are placing gambling premises in the areas where people are most vulnerable, because it is baked in that there will be online gambling attached to those physical premises. It's the perfect storm, and I'm glad that councillor Lau has brought this motion forward, and I hope we can resolve some of these matters, because research shows the people who are most likely to gamble live live in these least resourced areas, and yet some of our premises are clustered in deprived areas such as Feltham.
Twenty seconds.
That is predatory placement, and I'm glad that we are going to put a stop to that. We have a duty to resist any gambling institution that promotes quick fix or quick buys for for our residents.
Thank you, councillor Mashisho.
So yes, I support the intention of this report, and I also call my fellow colleagues and everybody around to make sure we show transparency in our leadership. Thank you.
Councillor Farmahen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am pleased to support this motion brought forward by councillor Gourmet Lau, because it speaks to an issue that affects for too many families in Hounslow and across the country. Gambling addiction is not a niche problem, it is a public health crisis. Public Health England estimates the cost to society at over one billion every single year, as earlier on councillor Lau mentioned in the motion. But behind that number are real lives, people falling into the debt, families breaking under the train, and for the gambling industry, for not for the public. I am fully support the six recommendation put forward by the Social Market Foundation and Brent Council, collections of local authorities. They are practical, well researched, and long overdue. Giving council the power to consider community impact involving director of public health, closing loopholes, increasing licence fee so enforcement is properly funded, and crucially removing the aim-to-permit rule. These are not radical ideas, they are common sense reforms that would help us protect our residents. I am proud that Hounslow is a part of a growing coalition of councils pushing for reform, and we have already seen that our collective voice makes a difference. The government decision to halt plans for more harmful B three machines in adult gaming centres shows that when local authorities speaks together, we can shape policy. This motion is not anti-fun, is not anti-leisure, it is about recognising that for many people, gambling is not entertainment, it is addiction, it is exploitation, it is a harm. Our high streets deserve better, our residents deserve better, and this council should lead by example. I urge colleagues across the chamber to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Farmahen.
Madam Mayor, section eleven, sub-paragraph L, could the question now be put?
Okay. Yes, certainly, that's fine. In that case. Councillor Lau, would you like to sum up, please?
Chair, mindful of the of the time, so I think we've got a general consensus of opinion. So I'll just pick up on what councillor Thompson said about the online issue. Yes, relevant issue, but I think overall, this is a step in the right direction. In terms of councillor Mashisho, you started off well, you tried to conflate it a little bit, but you're back on board, and I'm happy that you're going to support the motion. Thank you very much for that, and thank you for your contributions, councillor Adish. Sitting on the planning committee. Analyst. And councillor Stroud Turp. Sitting on, sitting on the planning committee, I think some of you may well have come across cases like this, where we've been restricted in what we were really able to do, when we could see the wood for the trees. But I'm hoping that now, like I said, it's a step in the right direction, there's a lot more to be done, but we've got a consensus here, so I'm happy, Mr Madam Mayor, if we can move to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lau. I think everybody's pleased to move to the vote. Could I ask everybody in favour of the motion to raise their hands? I'm going to go in on that as well. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Then the motion is carried. Thank you very much indeed. Now, I'm afraid I have a substantial additional matter that is going to take some time. I'm joking, we're nearly at the end. Ha ha. Onto agenda item fifteen, any other matters that the mayor considers.
That is not kind, Madam Mayor, it's not kind.
But it was necessary and true, yeah. Sorry. I know, I know. So any other matters that the mayor considers urgent? None at this moment. So the date of the next meeting, the date of the next meeting is the tenth of March twenty twenty-six, which gives us all a time for a bit of rest. Thank you all for attending. Thank you all for contributing, and although I had to raise issues, thank you all for finally acting civilly. Can I remind everybody, we've got the sixtieth anniversary portrait unveiling and the mayoral festive reception on Tuesday, the ninth of December. Please feel free to wear a festive jumper if you so feel. Note that this is the last council meeting of the year, and therefore I would like to wish everybody a very happy Christmas, New Year, festive period, and thank you. Let's go home.